Hi Mayor, this is Kaylee Mullins. I'm going to be presenting for planning. Give me just a second.
Thank you.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Scott Oldham is proposing to rezone 12.85 acres located off of 15501. The current zoning is RA2 and the proposed zoning is C2. The future land use plan shows these parcels as medium density residential. Action required, conduct the public hearing and please note that the applicant is here to provide comment and answer questions.
Alright, thank you. Cassie, do we have those signed up for the public hearing?
I did not get a request for anyone.
Alright, well I'm assuming the applicant, does the applicant wish to say anything?
Yeah, this is Scott Oldham. This is the property we want to rezone. I've got my engineer, Brian Harris, is online. If I could get him on, he's got some presentations for you. So he should be.
Yes sir, I'm on.
He's on, okay. I'll let him take over.
Thank you Scott. Mr. Harris?
Yes sir, thank you for, you know, hearing us out on this. If I can get the screen share on the, actually right here is a good image as it is. As you can see, we already got part of that area right there in the south corner, already C2. We just kind of want to expand that all the way up 15501. One of the things that this image doesn't really show is, here's a good one as well, where that 7103 and just just south of that one actually is that whole Chatham Park area. And that's, you know, I know is a PUD, I think, zoned. Which in all essence is commercial and in the, basically all we're trying to do is is create a likeness of this. Currently in that parcel 3209, we had a mechanic shop that burnt down a year and a half ago and and Scott Oldham's looking at trying to rent that place out again, but we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves to one specific use. We want to be able to have at least a little bit more flex flexibility on what uses we can have. I do have a little sketchup of a plan that basically shows some office buildings, you know, spread across these lots. And and shows that hey, you know, this is an idea. Obviously, we don't have anything confirmed on what we're gonna do, but we do know that we're not gonna sit there and and have, you know, like fast food restaurants or or, you know, some kind of unsightly things. We want to make it, we want to better this out and make it look a little bit more professional like just having some industrial looking like storage sheds or something like that. We're not looking for anything like that. Office buildings, I think, is the most common kind of scheme that that is widely used, that he can kind of have someone come in and rent his land or building out and still make, you know, money for him without having to cater to one specific use. Does anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Harris or Mr. Oldham?
Have you guys considered a conditional zoning application where you would kind of curate the uses that you were just describing to eliminate the unsightly ones?
Yes, we have. The process would have been longer and, I mean, we're not a we figured that we can kind of go through this process and just eliminate process, like the zones, hey, you don't you're not allowed to have this, you're not allowed to have this, instead of sitting there saying, hey, let's plan for everything. I think everyone can kind of agree that residential in this area is probably not going to be the the key factor. I know that the future plan says that this is residential agricultural two acres, which two acre pieces of land is is pretty significant in this area. And I mean, in truth, having a lot of driveways or access in and out of here, I wouldn't think is feasible. But yeah, to answer your your question, Michael, is that we have thought about it. We just kind of figured that this will be the the best course due to if we sit there and say, hey, we want to do this, but we forgot to ask that. It's easier to sit there and say, hey, well, let's go with C2, but we can't do this, we can't do that, we can't do that.
I have a question. Have you all spoken with the other property owners? Just made any inquiries or connected with them at all?
This one would be more in your realm. It's a bunch of, it's a family, a lot of family land out there. So if you don't mind answering this, Scott?
Well, I mean, I own most of the property around it and my sister owns a tract beside of me. And it's really all relatives, like you said, both sides of the road there that own the property. Poultry Villa Landscaping, right now occupies a majority of this. And it should be a commercial, it is a commercial property. We've been in business for 40 years as a landscaping business. And then also the automotive shop was there. It's been there since 1970, the one that burned. And so it's been commercial already for quite a while. We just want to really get it zoned properly and just have it properly zoned for what we're actually using it for now.
Now, I was referring to parcel number 7115 and 7089, which is right behind 7110.
I've talked to 7115.
Okay.
Everything's cool there. And I've also talked to the other one, was it 7089? Yeah, I've talked to him. He actually doesn't, nobody lives on those two parcels. 7089 actually lives in Durham. And I've talked to both of them.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Any any other questions from board?
Yes.
I like it, one thing. I know C2 kind of opened the doors for anything. I kind of like what Michael said regarding some conditional use zoning. Because C2 does open the doors to whatever you want to put there and there. Possibility, we may not like some things that may be there. I mean, you know, you know where that goes.
Oh yeah. Yeah, there's not going to be a strip joint or anything like that there by any means. What I want to do is have something that complements Chatham Park. I mean, all that's going to be commercial one day soon anyway. And we're we're already on a major highway there too. So I just want to complement what's going up with Chatham Park.
Mr. Mr. Oldham, I'm not sure of the the language to express this or even ask, but is the long term plan to unify these separate tracts?
It would be nice if we could because there's a lot of cut up stuff there now.
And then develop it as a whole, perhaps?
Maybe, yeah. That's an option.
Have you considered annexation and or how sewer would be provided to the property?
Yes, I have.
I think Brian's got that.
I have. So there is, if you actually look at the the Chatham Park, there's that road entertainment way and there is a sanitary sewer just north of that road, between that road and 7103. It's doing the preliminary analysis. I don't know exactly how far, how deep that manhole is as of right now, because all I could see was basically the plans and not the as built. So I am seeing that we do have the capabilities of searing to that one manhole underneath 7103, but we would need to get basically a construction easement and also a public sanitary sewer easement to that one sanitary sewer from 15501. But it is feasible, yes sir.
Just a little bit of information. I'm curious about the, I think, mechanics building that Scott, you said was there, what, from the 70s?
Yeah.
So I know that you became nonconforming when the town's zoning was overlaid on you. And so you were deemed a nonconforming situation. And so I think this probably for Jeff, Jeff was the structure, a nonconforming structure?
Um, I think it may have been. It's hard to tell now that it's been removed about setbacks and and such.
Well, I just was checking into the ordinance because I, you know, understood that you know, that was one of the reasons that Scott wanted to originally just rebuild the thing and then basically was told that wasn't wasn't able to do that.
Well, he wanted to build something bigger than was there. So.
Okay.
That wasn't the case.
So it would have been the non, so it was the nonconforming use component?
Correct.
Okay, so technically could rebuild the structure, same size, same location?
The use would be then an issue.
But I, and that's where, I mean, I haven't dug in completely, but I think the nonconforming use says as long as things are continued to be legal, i.e. wasn't an expansion of the nonconforming use. The only time you can't rebuild, as I read the ordinance, the nonconforming structure, is if it is a nonconforming structure. So if it was a conforming structure, I think you could rebuild and continue the nonconforming use.
I think that's a board of adjustment decision that has to be made. That's not a town board decision.
No, I don't think it's a town board decision. I think honestly, it's a planning director's interpretation of the code, which then may be subject to board of adjustment. So that was the reason I was asking, is it a nonconforming structure? Because as far as I can tell, I think you can rebuild.
But that's not his intent. He wants to.
No, I'm talking about what, he he would have the right, I think, to rebuild the structure in its place and use it as it was being used.
Not as it was being used, no. Because the use has been elapsed for more than six months. And he would not be able to to recontinue a nonconforming use. At least I couldn't make that decision and the town board couldn't make that decision.
Okay.
That would be a board of adjustment.
Jeff, this is Chris. To that end, is there any ordinance pertaining to the reconstruction of a structure regardless of the use itself?
Yes, if the structure was destroyed by fire more than 50% and was otherwise legal, then it could be rebuilt. That 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 could be, that could be done.
Is there any limitation on how how soon it would have to be rebuilt?
Um, there may be limitations on how soon it can be built. I know we we discussed this with Scott early after he, after the building burned and gave him a path of reconstruction and reuse, continuation of the use that was there. Time elapsed and what he would like to build there is bigger than what was there. And it isn't quite sure that the use is what he would like to also continue. I think you heard from his engineer in the presentation that they don't want to be pigeonholed into one use.
Understood. I I think the way the way I was interpreting Mr. Fioco's question was more of regardless of the use itself, could the building be rebuilt and a conforming use be applied to it in lieu of a rezoning?
Sure, sure. There's just very limited commercial opportunities in RA2.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'll point out to the board is that we've talked about conditional zoning and the request is for general use rezoning. And that's how we will proceed. A new request would have to come in for a conditional use rezoning or a conditional zoning. And I think, I think staff tried to tried to guide the applicant in that direction. They they chose to do a general use rezoning. And and that's what's before the before the board and tonight and then ultimately the planning board next week or in September.
Anything further from Mr. Harris or Mr. Oldham?
Jeff, just to clarify, the conditional zoning is the only way that we could exclude certain uses that would ordinarily be allowed in C2 as their, I mean, I think we agree with what they're talking about, but I think the conditional is the only way to do that.
That's correct. Yes, obviously, I think it would be in their best interest to have reduced the number of uses, potentially limited access to 15501 through a site plan, a schematic plan. Buildings, impervious surface, that was not presented to the town and that's not what's before the town tonight.
Alright, well I can show you something if you give me the ability to share the screen.
We're gonna stop sharing it.
Where is? This is, like I said, the you see, I had, I don't know be showing now, the one with my title block on the right. And it says preliminary right across the center of it. This is basically like a general mockup. Obviously, we'll still have to go more in detail on number of parking spaces, landscaping plan, all this other stuff, but that's the general, I, like, like I said, just a general markup of what we've put. Like I said, we're not trying to put any strip joints or or storage units or anything like that. And I apologize, Jeff. I thought the C2, we could sit there and eliminate saying we can sit there and I thought the commissioners can rezone it and say, we will allow this, but not these types of use that is C2. That was my understanding. And I saw a text kind of come up through the Zoom asking if 7110, that would be this lot right here, was the one with the mechanic shop. It's actually three something, I forgot what it was, but the mechanic shop was right here, if y'all can see my cursor.
Brian, I would note for the board. I'd say Brian would note for the board's sake and I'm sure Jeff would China as well, and I encourage him to do so, is that the site plan that Brian showed on the screen, without a conditional district, you keep, the site plan doesn't really include you going from base zoning to base zoning. So there's really no applicant representation that can be taken at this at this junction unless you go with the conditional district. So again, that that screen helps certainly with some context, but barring conditional district, none of that's enforceable. It's simply one base zoning to another base zoning. So I would caution the board of allowing a projected rendering to potentially sway your decision making on this.
I think it's also worth noting that, yeah, a straight zoning, while you may put conditions on it privately, there's nothing that the town can do publicly to enforce any limitation of uses that you voluntarily put on the property yourself unless it's part of the conditional zoning, which then creates the ability for the town to do that enforcement. But without it, whatever is permitted in C2 is permitted in C2.
I mean, personally, I don't mind the conditional zoning at all. I mean, that was not the, it was not the intent of myself or Brian or Mr. Harris to misrepresent everything or anything. I mean, what we're wanting to do is get it where we could actually do something and make something out of it that would be a lot better than the way it sits right now. And something the town would be proud of and and myself too. So the conditional zoning is fine with me, as long as, you know, we're not going to have a strip joint or fast food or whatever you may require us not to have. You know.
We can, we can work with that.
Is there there's something that we can do to kind of like combine the two, the rezone and the conditional use to sit there and say, hey, look, you know, we still would like this to be a C2, but we still want the conditional use, you know, to limit us, you know, so that way we're not doing anything that the town doesn't want us to do.
The conditional zoning would overlay the base district, so you would say C2. And of the uses allowed in C2, those would be the list from which you would perhaps eliminate uses you didn't think were palatable for the land or the town in this location.
Because the way I was understanding was that if we went with a conditional use solely, that, you know, we would be pigeonholing ourselves to to, you know, just one or two uses and not like more, you know, wouldn't be able to put like offices there or you know, something that that could get on more, more clients.
There is a difference between conditional use zoning and conditional zoning. Conditional zoning is the thing I think you're looking for to limit from a list of uses, those you don't like, whereas conditional use is more associated with a single use. I think you're looking for conditional zoning.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. And I'm guessing is that going to be?
I think the question would be another application. There is another, there would be another application and a fee associated with that conditional zoning request. So we could start that process as soon as, you know, we could essentially not move forward with this request at the applicant's wishes and you all could work with staff to come up with a conditional zoning application that that you could put forth to the board. Or you can go forward with the with the request to the planning board in September.
Okay, Jeff, do you have any advice on, you know, you think that the planning board would be okay with doing that instead of the the single use, conditional use?
Well, this wouldn't go to the planning board in September if you wanted to change.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
No, I think, I think staff has has said as much in the past that if you came with a conditional zoning request, that 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 the town would most likely be more receptive. And so I don't have any difference of opinion on that now. So I think if you you all looked at other conditional zonings that have been approved in the past couple of years by the town and you looked at the list of uses and the table of uses for C2 and you wanted to go through there and eliminate uses and, you know, somewhat give a schematic plan that's on the screen right now, that you're well on your way to a conditional zoning request that that the board, that both boards would would consider.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Well, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, so we are out of public hearing. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Harris and Mr. Oldham.
Thank you.
The, so now we're into the regular meeting agenda. And Cassie, did anyone send in any students and matters?
Randy Volle would like to speak.
Okay.
I'm gonna add him. And I know Candace wants to speak as well.
I think Candace is on, isn't she?
He's already been promoted, yes. He said he wanted to talk, but I don't see him as an attendee anymore.
Okay.
Oh, there he is. I see him now. Okay, so I'm promoting him.
Alright. Alright, so we have two that want to address this as citizen matters, is that correct?
I think he's on mute. I said, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I I believe I just want that Candace, I think, was addressing the board on the stop sign, which is she, which is on the agenda, correct?
I do not know why she wanted to speak.
Yes.
If that's the case, then we can.
We can move on because I'm on the board of directors with Candace and she requested that I come to the meeting with her. Since we can only do this via Zoom, just recognize me when we get to that item on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Alright, so given that, we will hear from Candace and Randy when we get to that agenda item. I have no updates. Board members, EDC or etc. Michael?
Yeah, I have got a couple of updates. I imagine folks have heard the news. Alyssa is moving on from the EDC. She provided notice, I think, last week. So has given 30 days notice, so we'll miss her, but she is headed to Fuquay Varina. And there's a a board meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM that I'll be attending. The RPO is meeting this Thursday. And I think there will be three from Pittsboro in that meeting and not four, although, Chris, I don't know. Are you attending? Yeah.
I can't have needed, but there's, we certainly have three other representatives, so.
Come on, let's go, four of us.
Sure, why not?
Right, so I'm looking forward to that. Main Street, the Welcome Center is just about done. We hope we're going to get a CO later this week. The mural is complete and turned out to be a pretty spectacular job, I think. The Edwards property, northwest corner of Hillsborough and Salisbury, has been getting some improvements, windows replaced. Canopy should go up in the next week and a half. Happy to say that the first facade grant that we exercised last year, Perch, is now open for business. It's a good looking building. The inside's really nice, fantastic job by Hobbs Architects. Also give an update on Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Obviously, they're working with helping us name the park. And they're working towards a goal of recommendations or options for the 27th. They did submit a resolution of support for paving Robeson Greenway. Jeff asked that it be put off till next meeting only because he had a very busy agenda and wanted to have additional time to prepare a really good report and presentation for the 27th. So look forward to that. And that is, I think, associated with another item we have on the agenda tonight, and that's the bike and pet plan. So that's all I have.
Okay. Mayor Prokem Baldwin, anything?
Well, I don't have anything. We're on vacation at the Triangle J, other than I want to remind everyone about the census. That's very important because the deadline was extended. So and everyone needs to complete that and get that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissionership?
Yes, just the affordable housing advisory.
Uh, yes, just the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did not meet this month, so we'll meet again in, well, it did not meet last month. I think, and so we'll meet in September. Um, and then with the Boys and Girls Club, we had our first meeting of the Steering Committee on the 30th of, uh, July and had a great turnout. We had 18 people, uh, come out for that, on Zoom for that. And, um, so really good progress and we got another meeting this Thursday to continue that with the goal of having a club open by the first of the year. So.
Great. Uh, Commissioner Farrell, any?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chris or Bob or both, any town manager updates?
In the eight hours today, I've got nothing so far.
I don't have anything else to add either, man.
Okay, thank you both. All right. So we'll move on then to the uh, next agenda item, which was is the Northwood MUPD and Planning. I'm not sure who from Planning is presenting.
We were, we understood that the applicant wanted to delay this request. And we thought that that had gotten to you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, um, it might be better to delay this until the next meeting. Uh, Mr. Kennedy and I have had some discussions about how the ordinance should be worded and we would need some time to discuss that with the applicant. So I would suggest that this be tabled until the next meeting.
Okay.
If it's the annexation issue.
I would entertain a motion to table this agenda item until the next meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, so it can move to the next meeting. So the next item has to do with the sewer allocation request. Uh, Chatham County Central School System Building. Again, that's a planning presentation or lead.
Mayor, I'm gonna bring up my screen here for us to take a look at. Okay, so at the last meeting, um, Chatham County had a request for 31 gallons per day of sewer for proposed central services building. At that, at last meeting, this request was tabled for, for more information. What's on the screen is the site plan that Chatham County is, is reviewing and going through an approval process. I, I would assume with the county, uh, since this, this parcel lies outside of the town's planning jurisdiction. Uh, I know the county manager is online with us to answer any further questions that may have come up since the last meeting. Staff, uh, tried to provide some documentation, the resolution from 2012. I do believe that the county and town agreed to when the detention center was built and a sewer line, a force main was, uh, was located and, and ran to this, this, uh, this area of, of town. Uh, I'll turn it over to Dan for any more, uh, questions or comments and then from the board.
So this is the preliminary, um, site plan for the central services facility. Um, the northern boundary line that you see there is where our mulching operations are in the Soloway recycling facility. So this is almost, this is kind of the furthest north on that tract, this south of where the detention center is. And this is on the east side of the road. Um, again, this is preliminary schematic of where that is. Um, I'll happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions or discussion?
Well, um, yeah, I, uh, I'm up for discussion. You know, 3,000 gallons or 3,100, um, may seem like not, not a lot, but, uh, when compared to some of the other uses, you know, it's a 75 table restaurant or seat restaurant. Um, you know, it's a 40,000 square foot, uh, shopping center. And those are things that, um, should this be allocated to this location would not be available for businesses in town. Um, I think the school central services is a fabulous use to have in town. Um, there's, I think, 120 employees that would come to town on a day, well, work daily basis. And, you know, visitors, the clients, the consultants that would visit, the parents, the, um, folks that would come to town um, are another big draw. And I think an important piece of the fabric of what we consider the county seat, that, uh, this is the place where you go to do business with the county. I think it's part and parcel of the fabric of Pittsburgh. Um, and I think it's an important mix to the economy of Pittsburgh. Um, I know there's been a big investment made out here. Um, there's a likely septic as an option. And I understand that 3,100 gallons of sewer capacity would probably be a pretty good, um, it'd be a much more durable solution than septic. Um, Chatham County's not known for its quality, perccable soil. Um, so in general, I, I don't think it's a, a great idea to move this type of use out of town. That said, I think the investment's been made. And one of the things that Dan, you mentioned as a substitute for the value of that use on that property was the redevelopment of the property. And I think you made mention of the idea of a, you know, mixed use, commercial, residential, uh, use and, um, you know, I, I can see that. Um, I can see that as a, as a, a real potential plus for the town. And in looking at it that way, what I'd like to do is have the town and the county, and I guess the school board, enter into an agreement where we would work together to, um, make sure that that property does get developed in this mixed use fashion that we all think is a good thing for the town. And I think there could be a memorandum of understanding, uh, between the three parties as to how we would go about doing this. And honestly, put some legs on it and within a year's time, uh, have the goal of putting out an RFP for the private sector to tell us after we develop a program of uses on the property that we think are beneficial, that they come in and tell us how it is that they can do this. And it may be that, um, in exchange for them doing that development, and we all know the benefits of subsidizing affordable housing, that perhaps the property is exchanged with the developer in exchange for them creating the mixed use development that we'd like to see there. If that's, um, you know, that's, that's what I think would be beneficial to the town, I think, in losing this very good office user. Um, that's what I, I would like to see happen to, um, you know, send this facility out to the county, outside of town limits.
I think that's what the intention has been all along. Um, when we first conceived of this, when Commissioner Dashar was chair of the Board of Commissioners, we discussed that. Um, currently, we don't have, we haven't, um, had detailed discussions with the school board about that, but they have no other uses for that at this time. That's been the plan all along, bringing it back and bring visitors to downtown, brings tax base to downtown. Get the non-taxpaying user out of that area. And it's, it's such a vibrant part of downtown right there. We see that as a great opportunity for the town. Um, I will point out, you know, this is public purpose for the school sort of central services. These are benefit to everybody in the county, the offices at the school central services building. Um, I think the MOU is a great idea, Commissioner Fiocco. Um, a matter of getting all of the parties together to do that, I don't think it's going to be any issue of having those discussions, getting something worked out. The idea all along has been to maybe get a consultant at some point, like you said, an RFP. Get out there and see what the opportunities are. And we thought mixed use would be great there, and these are all just ideas at this time, but and then, but, but as part of that requiring that there be a, an element of affordable housing and that being as close it is to the schools, uh, and to the service industry in Pittsburgh, we think affordable housing would be wonderful right there.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the county's probably a little bit ahead of the town with the town. We've been working very hard, um, trying to come up with, well, we came up with a, a set of um, ideas that we thought, we heard from the, the development community who does, does affordable housing as to how to assist and invest and help subsidize that because honestly, if the community wants it, be an investor in it. Do the things that you can do, um, to help it occur. So, uh, I know the county's got some funding set aside that, uh, you know, is the kind of, um, benefit to the development community to put affordable housing on the ground. So, yeah, I think we're aligned in, in a lot of, uh, vision here. So, um, I think let's find a way to make this work for all of us. Um, and I would make a motion that we, um, have the managers, um, of the town, the county, and whoever it is that would represent, I guess, uh, Dr. Jordan, come up with an MOU that describes how we're going to do this and, um, I think make the, um, sewer, um, request part of that, uh, agreement.
Okay. Um, I don't know why we have to, uh, I think that is kind of separate and apart from, from the sewer allocation part of it, but, uh, I mean, we, we definitely view that, that site. And like you said, Commissioner Fiocco, we have leveraged our property for affordable housing and to other situations in the county. And we think having the vacant property to offer to these developers for affordable housing has been a great incentive to do that.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed.
That, that has worked for us. Well, we've got, um, 44 units in downtown Soller City right now. And out at our business park, we've got another 84 units that are in the pipeline. Uh, the fund is very helpful. I think we're helping cover some impact, impact fees and utility fees for some developments. I think possibly even the one in Pittsburgh that's coming in there, uh, out of that fund. Um, I would like to continue moving with this school project and get design completed and get ready for bids. Um, I certainly with, under good faith, we can continue to talk about the MOU on that site. As I said, that was our intention all along. And to, to work with the town of Pittsburgh was absolutely key to that. And we've got other potential in that area in the future with the sheriff's office.
Um, I think we could, we could manage to put this MOU together pretty quickly, so I don't think that we would delay your, your work on the project.
What's your, what's your timeframe, Dan, for, um, going to bid? I mean, other than yesterday or today?
We want to have, we want to have bids in hand by, uh, next July to go to borrowing. And we're trying to finalize design. And if we have to go the septic route, that changes entirely how we're doing this. So I need to have a, I need to have some kind of firm answer of what we're doing as soon as possible, so I know which direction to go. Obviously that'll take more land. Uh, the septic is definitely another environmental concern. Um, it's just much more sustainable to be connected to municipal wastewater treatment system, as you all know. So, so the sooner the better. Um, we really need to continue moving with design and finalizing it or something.
As I was saying, because depending on what the MOU, uh, how detailed it may or may not be, um, if it's really just, uh, the three parties, um, school board, uh, county and Pittsburgh, kind of getting on the same page and, you know, basically just reducing to writing something that says, we'd like to have a coordinated effort. I mean, which is basically what a MOU is in some regards is you can make it as detailed as you would like, but, uh, that might be something we can put together in short order. Um, keep you on track, but also provide the comfort, um, to Pittsburgh, knowing that, uh, again, you, your offer of good faith is, has been reduced to writing somewhat and that way others, um, you know, certainly it's not a overly enforceable document, but something that we can look back to and say, hey, pursuant to this MOU, this is how we wish to proceed. And I don't know what your thoughts on that might be, Dan.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned that we have three elected boards that we have to coordinate with.
Yeah.
Um, so that is not a short term thing. That is, uh, figuring out when these meetings occur, getting on agendas for all of them, including the school board who's got pretty full agenda these days, trying to figure out how to do what they do in an entirely different atmosphere. Um, I don't see a problem moving forward with that, but I, I, I would think in a good faith effort was, would be to get the sewer allocation and pursue that. Uh, uh, regardless of what anybody thinks, I'm pretty good for my word. Um, I can assure you that is what the intention is on this site. Um, it's a matter of just working with those groups and Dr. Jordan about, and I have discussions all the time. But we have to get to the Board of Education, which are having a meeting tonight, as a matter of fact. Um, so I'm not sure when their next meeting is. Then it would be Board of Commissioners meeting. I think we got attorneys involved with that, so there's, um, MOUs are never quite as simple as they always sound. That's what I've learned.
Sure.
I'm not sure if there's a major functional difference for either side, but could we approve the allocation tonight with a contingency that we will have a memorandum, memorandum of understanding within defined time period? And then this project could go forward and we would have the understanding that that memorandum would have a, a timeline on it as well?
I think Chris and I can start working on this tomorrow.
Yeah. So Kyle, you're, you're suggesting provide the allocation and then work out an MOU with not having the two items linked at all?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that they're linked in that if we don't have a, a MOU within a defined time period, then, uh, we could withdraw the sewer allocation, but I don't know if that, that works. Um, just sort of putting a little more on the, on the handshake and that we, we agree that it would be done in, in X months. Um, and, you know, all parties think it's headed that way. And if for some reason it doesn't, then it would change the plans at that time, but they could continue moving forward now.
Yeah, Kyle, my opinion of that would be that you could provide such a condition. Um, it certainly, uh, puts a, a little bit more onus on the county to perform on that side of it. Uh, but I, I think you're certainly within your right to condition it. And then if that condition is not fulfilled, then inherently the allocation was never approved because the condition wasn't fulfilled. Again, uh, there's many different ways to splice it. If you, if you wish to go that route, you can certainly can do that. Um, I think Dan, in his defense, would probably say he'd prefer not to have that. Um, but again, it's up to Pittsburgh what it wants to do with its own sewer allocation. And if it's something that we think is going to be, uh, a formality anyway, that we're going to get the MOU in place. If nothing else, I guess the clock started and, and, and Dan and I will work diligently to get that done so that, uh, all parties are happy.
Yes.
If we did it like that, what would be a reasonable timeframe?
Dan, you, you want to speak to that?
Maybe six months.
When do you think your plans will be done?
I'm not sure. School system is the one doing the construction on that project.
Okay.
Ah, okay.
If I could, if I could draw a correlation, I will point out, I mean, you know, we've, I mean, if I could just say, under good, talking about good faith and we have, um, you know, the county put money towards the town hall and three years ago, we didn't put a stipulation and timeframe on that. And I'm having renew leases for our, you know, our, uh, Board of Elections, but we, we've operated on good faith with the town. $450,000 out there and we haven't even begun negotiating a lease yet. I mean, Bob, thankfully, Bob first reached out to me about that. Uh, the lease on the town hall. So I just, I just want to point that out. I mean, we, we certainly try to work with the town. So I just, I just want to point that out. I mean, we, we certainly try to work with the town on good faith. And we have in the past, and I hope our actions hold there.
Dan, there's no doubt that is part of the good collaboration and cooperation between town and county. Cannot deny that. I applaud it. I do think though, that, you know, there was a condition on that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it was, of course, at interest, so, you know.
There was no time limit on it, though?
No, because the interest kept running, but
One percent.
We, no, I, I think it's great. And honestly, you know, we had thought that you were also going to be doing the campus as part of the whole thing with the annex coming down and, and all of that, and, you know, that has changed. And honestly, had no idea that the school central services was moving. I, I think Jeff can get the timeframe correct, but I think there was a site plan submitted to the town replacing the building on the current site, so, you know, those were the types of things that I was understanding that made me feel like, yeah, we were really, you know, working together on this thing. So this, this one is a surprise to me, and I, I don't, I don't mind the jail going out of town, you know, I don't mind the mulch pile going out of town. I don't mind that. I just think that this particular user is really kind of, you know, it's a different user, and it's, it's a different user from the town's perspective, and I think the county's perspective, and so, you know, I, I'd like to see us continue to work together, most definitely. And part of the way I think do that is to link these things and make sure that we pursue it. I'm not saying that we, we don't think we're going to all do it, but let's motivate ourselves and do that. Whether it's, you know, the direction that I've taken or whether Kyle's, I mean, I, I prefer not to be punitive. I think, you know, like if we don't do this, then we're going to rescind something. I'd rather have it, you know, let's, I think it's be motivational to say, you know, we've got a timeline, let's get this done in two months or three months. And that gives you the ability to work forward in good faith with the, the current design that we're going to get this accomplished. We, I think we can do this. We make it a priority, and I think it's a big priority because I think it's a big, a big loss for the town. And I'd like to see it turn into a gain, and for all of us, if we can, you know, come up with a really solid program of mix of uses that can go there, and I think we are all definitely interested in the affordable housing component, and I mean, are really encouraged by the conversation we're having tonight. I, I think we can do this, but I, I feel the need to have them kind of linked as a, a way to motivate us.
Further discussion, can we?
Yeah, I'll say that I'd, I'd also be amenable and maybe naive enough to, to work on the handshake deal and in work with Chris, you know, set him off on the right foot with the county to, to work on this as an effort, but what I was suggesting was, was a middle ground, maybe. If we could get there, I, I would, I would defer on the timeline to other people that know, you know, those boards better, because I certainly understand how, how that, how that could take some time, but depending on the complexity of it.
Well, and if I may offer, and it's a question for, for Dan, and probably as much as anyone is, understanding that I'm just now getting kickstarted and all this stuff, and, and he and I haven't had a chance to work towards something maybe in advance of this meeting, preparation for this, and I know he already feels like in some regard that he's two weeks behind from the twenty-seventh, when the request first came before the board. Dan, would you be amenable to pushing this to the next meeting on the twenty-fourth of August? Bring this topic back up and allow yourself and myself to put our heads together, maybe look at schedules, how they coordinate, not only with our schedules, but how the board meetings may sequence, sequence themselves, and perhaps maybe even have something, a, a draft for the board to say, hey, here's what we, we put together over the last two weeks. Or, hey, this is a realistic timeframe, because if Pittsburgh sees it at one meeting, then there's a lag before it goes to the, to the Board of Education, then there's another lag before it goes to the county. Some of that can be done concurrent, but is that, is that something you'd be interested? I, I think that for Mr. Schiff and Mr. Fioke, and, and I'm, I'm sure some of the others who have to share their thoughts, maybe that might provide a little more comfort as we, and I don't, if you're looking next July, again, I think two weeks is two weeks, but, and I know you wanted something two weeks ago, but would you be amenable to that and see what we can put together for the board? And maybe they can make a more informed decision and say, okay, we didn't realize maybe it was going to take this long, or, or any other thing, or say, hey, maybe it's going to become together a lot quicker than we thought.
This is the first I've heard about the MOU being a stipulation to this allocation, so I was not prepared to answer any of this. I'm not prepared to even think about scheduling, so I didn't, didn't know what was coming to this. I'd be, I'd be happy to come back to the next meeting, but I sure would love to have the allocation granted today, and then come back at the next meeting with some plan like you were just talking about, Chris. I would love to be able to do that. I will be able to give it some thought. We can get the schedule pretty clear, I would think. But I haven't had no time to prepare for that at this point.
Sure.
Mr. Fioke, I believe that we had, you had made a motion.
I did.
There was now to say, I, I don't know if you'd want to rephrase it or say it again, or?
Well, my idea is that we enter into an MOU with the county and the school board regarding the development of mixed-use project on the property in town of the Chatham County School Central Services. And we get an MOU with the goal of putting it out an RFP within a year. But I feel the need that we correlate this with this sewer request. I think it's a doable thing, and that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Well, second that. Yes, I will second that, but also, thank you, pardon.
I said you broke up a little bit there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I will second that. And of course, my concern is that Chatham County School Central Services is moving out on Renaissance Drive. I would prefer for it to stay in, but I'd like to know, Dan, in reference to that building that's there now, is there a pro, I mean, is there some kind of situation going on with that building? Because I know at one time you had considered possibly renovating that. Is it a major problem, maybe asbestos or something?
In the, in the current, are you talking about the old Pittsboro High School?
Yes.
No, no, it's not suitable for their class, for their offices. It's a school, it's all high school.
Oh, yes, I know that.
You know, that whole, that hall room, that hallway is as wide as a house. So there, there, a lot of the space is taken up as a high school hall room, hallway. There's been a lot of talk about preserving that structure, and that's something that the school board actually discussed when we first talked about this, about preserving that Pittsboro High School for prosperity. We've been able to work with an old, old school in Salar City, and we had a developer, actually Fifth Wave, who was doing the work in Pittsboro for affordable housing, actually likes to do that type of renovation as part of their affordable housing. So that could possibly be it, but again, Commissioner Fioke's comment about, you know, an RFP, we see what kind of developer wants to come in, if they, I, I'm not sure if they would want to, you know, completely raise that whole site and build something back that's multi-story, or, you know, I guess that's all up for future discussion. I certainly do see a possibility of preserving that. We've seen it done in Salar City with the old Henry Salar School. They came in and renovated it and built two, two or three new buildings.
Yes, I've seen the Henry Salar School, and it looks great. And also the Paul Braxton School, that looks great as well. Both of those are good, very, very good examples of what you can do with affordable housing. But I was just concerned because this is actually a great location for the Chatham County Schools Central Office, because a lot of people, the schools are here more so, and sometimes the parents coming. I've been over there myself to meetings, so it's very, very easily accessible to, when I need to go to a meeting with the school board or whoever, so I'm really disappointed that it will be moving that far out.
Well, you would love the new meeting facilities that they're building. It'll be very nice, training rooms and meeting rooms there, so.
So we have a motion and a second? Did a, for the discussion before I call for a vote?
Yeah, one question on that. Michael, can you clarify what, what connection you're suggesting between the MOU and the allocation?
That we have an MOU in place.
Prior to the allocation?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
I would like to think it could be done sooner than the six months, but that's why I will leave it to the town manager, the county manager, and the superintendent of schools to find a way to make that happen. I think everybody's motivated, pulling in the same direction. We can do this.
Yeah, I agree. I'm, just out of discussion, I feel strongly that we should maybe move with the sewer allocation, but I am real strongly that we need something in writing regarding this with the schools and the county.
Right, been moved and seconded.
Further discussion, if I may?
Bonnetts?
If Commissioner Fioke would be open to what sounds like possibly a friendly amendment from Commissioner Schiff, then I, I could support this motion with the the allocation tied in the, to the text of the motion, but the allocation preceding the the MOU with the MOU to be delivered within some timeframe. And I think even Mr. Kennedy said that he thought that that could be withdrawn, or the allocation could be rendered non-existent if we don't fulfill the MOU, if all parties don't fulfill the Sounds like, you know, the, the design and, and development plan for this project, going out to bid July of next year, we have sufficient time, but I'm, I, I'm feeling uncomfortable frankly about being too stringent on which comes first because of this, this question of good faith. I, I think the county has has really done a lot for the town, and I think that Mr. Lamontaine has heard loud and clear that, that this board has been frustrated with oh, the past few years of maybe some changes to major capital improvement plans and the the campus idea going by the wayside, the redevelopment of an important part of downtown going away. But the county and the town are, are very important partners, and, and I very much respect Mr. Lamontaine's efforts and, and his his own good faith efforts on our behalf. So I'd like to reciprocate that and not be too stringent in holding anything for leverage that really doesn't have that same weight. I mean, they, they could indeed do a, a septic field and so, yeah.
Okay, there, any further discussion before the vote?
Well, I, I would like to say something. I did second that, Michael's. I, I did second that motion. However, I can certainly support that as well. I want them to go on and have the sewer since it seems as if that, that is not, you know, that is definite that the offices are going out to the Renaissance Drive, so I could support that as well.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, is there an amendment to the motion, or?
Not at this point. If I understood correctly, Commissioner Bonnetts offered a friendly amendment to Commissioner Fioke, and I have, it certainly hasn't, was not accepted and perhaps not rejected either. Commissioner Fioke?
I, 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 by no means mean anything disparaging at all about good faith efforts between the town and the county to get this done, but I honestly don't want to be in a position where we say, hey, you guys didn't do it, so we're going to rescind something. I just think it's the wrong way to do it. Let's work in good faith to take care of this, very important matter. And I think we can do that in good time without delay and meet the goals of all parties concerned.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Farrell.
I'm not sure if I understand, I understand the motion, but I'm not sure if I understand the second. I know Pam had said that she I don't know if she amended it or what, but can I get a little clarification?
Well, I understood, I, I didn't want to speak for Commissioner Baldwin, but I believe that she did not withdraw her second, but made the comment that she would be able to support something else as well, and, and particularly in relationship to the, you know, Dan's offering of good faith in terms of the MOU.
Yeah, that's right.
But as I understand it, the motions made and the second still holds, and the question now is whether to call for the vote on that motion, and so I will do so. All those in favor?
All right, just one more discussion before we
All right.
In that, the, on the scale of good faith, the most good faith would be to grant this allocation and then work on MOU without a connection. So further on that scale, towards the motion on the table would be my suggestion, but I'd be okay with either of those. But happy to vote as well.
Well, is there an amendment that you wish to make before we vote?
The, the same as, as I offered, that Commissioner Bonnetts restated. But I think the desire is to vote on this motion.
I'd think so too. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Now, motion fails.
Did we have, did Commissioner Baldwin and Commissioner Farrell vote? I heard silence, which I think is an affirmative.
I voted nay.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Farrell voted nay.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so that motion has failed. That leaves us with the action on this agenda item, which is seeking approval of the sewer allocation.
So I'll, I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead. We approve the sewer allocation for the Central Services Building contingent on having a memorandum of understanding between the town of Pittsboro, Chatham County, and the Chatham County School Board four months from now.
Four months, second.
All right, any discussion?
Clarification?
Yes.
Rather than four months and deciding that that's from today, can we just say by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty?
Yeah, that's acceptable, sure.
Approximately four months.
Sure.
So the motion would be then to approve the request for sewer allocation contingent on a MOU being in place by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. being in place by December thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Is that correct, Kyle?
Yes, and to be specific, a MOU about the redevelopment of that.
Okay, is there a second?
My second holds.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was Commissioner Farrell, Ship, Baldwin and Bonnetts correctly?
Yes.
All those opposed? Okay, so that motion has passed. So moving on, we now have the, uh, Pittsburgh Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan and planning.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I interje- I believe the, uh, animal shelter allocation also got pushed to this meeting?
It was approved last meeting.
That was approved last meeting.
Okay.
Yes, we approved that last meeting.
Oh, very good. Uh, thank you very much.
Okay.
Are you sure? I, I didn't think we did either.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, I thought we tabled both items.
No, we approved the animal shelter.
Yes.
That's what my notes tell me.
I, I didn't recall that happening.
Right, right.
I, I wasn't clear either, and I, I did ask today, um, and I thought that we, we had. Jeff, is that correct?
Um, I had, I had limited notes as well, but I did consult with Cassie and Bob, and I think Cassie went back through the minutes, uh, maybe even the audio and chased down the vote. And so I, I do believe that the animal shelter did receive the allocation at the last meeting.
Well, given that I, I think a quorum of the board thinks that it was approved, is, does it hurt anything to go ahead and just provide an approval just in case?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hey, Dan, can I ask a question?
All right.
On the animal services, that's, there's an animal services, uh, facility in place right now. Can I take it that's on septic?
Yes.
Yeah, so this would allow for the expansion and move, um, to, um, town sewer.
Correct, it's an expansion and a renovation of the old park.
Yeah, so does it, and it, and I, does it drain to the pump station at the jail? Is that how it works?
Uh, drains to the pump station at the bus garage.
Uh, is that where the jail also drains to?
No, there's two different pump stations there.
Oh, there are?
There's a large one at the jail that is its own pump station.
Yeah.
As part of the bus garage, uh, construction and allocation there, we built a, a pump station there. Um, and those two are tied together through SCADA.
Okay.
To sink into the same force main.
That, okay, all right.
Jail, jail was given priority, um, in SCADA over any of that, obviously, with check.
Yeah, that's important. So I think what animal services will go to the bus pump station.
That's correct.
And then join.
You know, the, you know, the two T allocations are so conservative that that pump station doesn't run. It actually needs some more flow.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay, well, the motion to, is then to approve the animal shelter allocation. Uh, if, if we did not, uh, at the last meeting.
And that is, how much, two thousand six sixty?
Twenty-one. Bear with me just one second. Twelve sixty.
Twelve sixty?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yes. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, so the animal shelter allocation is approved if we did not do it last time, but I think we did, so.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I do appreciate it. If, if you would entertain just one question, Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Nass?
Yes, of course.
I know you had a, an item on your consent agenda on the main, on the circle improvements and the budget for that. Commissioner Fioco, I want to make sure that the twenty-six thousand dollars that the county had for the easements for DOT was contributed back to that. I didn't see that in any of that. I want to make sure that you guys are accounting for that somewhere that I don't know if that was in DOT share or if it was in your share or it was for that utilities, is that correct?
That is correct, and it is something that I shared with the board this afternoon via an email, um, that how the county had participated. And I think it was twenty-seven thousand, and I think Barber Holmes put in ten thousand. So it was, you know, a private-public partnership and, you know, you and I worked through that issue and I am very appreciative of your, the county participating.
Don't take this wrong. I just wanted to make sure nobody forgot about it.
No, no, precisely.
Absorb it or something. I, I just want to make sure it goes to this project.
Yeah.
You know, I want to make sure it went to this project. I didn't want it to get lost in DOT budget.
Imagine that.
That was, just wanted to make sure, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan, and I appreciated you working with the town and the DOT on that, because that wasn't easy. There were a couple of goofs on their consultant's part, then you guys were patient and no, so, yeah, it's appreciated.
You know, and I didn't mean it any other way than just to make sure that it, that, that it goes to the project. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss something there that it really didn't just evaporate into DOT budget.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Very good. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next item is the, uh, Pittsburgh Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. Uh, planning, you're presenting and seeking approval, if I understand correctly.
Mayor, um, not necessarily approval tonight, um, as a, we had a presentation from the consultant at our last meeting.
Yes.
Um, there was a request by the board to table action on the ped plan, bicycle and ped plan for review. And, uh, I think the board, um, had at least a couple of weeks to review. I know Commissioner Ship sent some initial comments this afternoon to staff and the consultant. And I really wanted to put this agenda item on, on, on for this evening for you all to further discuss um, the bicycle ped plan and direct any comments to staff and the consultant. The consultant is not online, uh, but I can take comments, uh, back to Stephen. Um, I'll try to answer the questions myself.
Well, one of the ca- uh, questions I had is that the, uh, pretty much the beginning of the presentation, it talked about, uh, the adoption of this plan providing, uh, new, uh, programs and processes and but I didn't find anywhere in the plan any description of what those programs and processes might be. And so I guess it's part of a broader concern that what did we mean to adopt this plan? Uh, I, I would assume if we adopted, the reason we will do so is because we would like to see it implemented. And I guess I would like to have a little more, uh, information about exactly how we're going to go about implementing that. Which processes or procedures or ordinances or, uh, development standards need to be changed or updated or otherwise, uh, uh, dealt with in order to make this plan, uh, actually, uh, be implemented and, and come into being. I know very often we do these plans and the implementation sometimes lags, and so those, those are kind of my questions about, uh, how to, you know, what comes next? If we approve the plan, all we've done is approve, uh, the document as it exists and uh, what, what does it take to make something happen?
Jim, one of the things that, uh, I, I, I agree and I recognize that, because one of my thoughts on it was, you know, this is the beginning of, I think, quite a bit of work. Um, you know, and I think there are recommendations and I think there are lots of, there's lots of data and there's lots of options presented, uh, but documents to consult what sections of the UDO to change. Um, but one of the things I think it did do is identify a lot of improvements, uh, that were raised in priority, I think, by being on this plan. And I think one of the things we've, we've heard, uh, from Jeff is that one of the real benefits of the, of the plan is to having something in place when soliciting or competing for funding, uh, for these projects. So I think in that regard, it, it is a valuable document immediately in that regard. Um, but yeah, I, I took it as, wow, this is a, this is the beginning of a, a fair amount of work, but not a bad set of guidelines and goals to, to meet, so. Um, you know, I thought, I thought it was, uh, a good plan, but acknowledge that it, it forebodes a lot of work on the town's part to make this a reality.
Certainly, I agree, and that's looking back over my comments, a lot of them, I mean, a couple of them were typos and, but a lot of them were larger questions about how do we implement this or, you know, things related to, to similar plans. Um, on, on page forty-six and forty-seven, there is, uh, specific steps to take uh, for implementation through, through five years early when this plan would be updated again. Um, and I think a big one there is starting the, uh, bike, the, the B-PAC, the, the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, um, which would be an offshoot of the original steering committee. Ideally, I don't know how many of those people are still engaged, uh, or willing, but, um, but I think there's a lot of really good stuff in here, um, and like you said, Michael, it is, I think it positions us for um, funding and it actually, in fact, mentions a lot of funding, potential funding sources. And that's another question, and I think probably charge for the eventual B-PAC is to, uh, run down those funding sources and uh, obtain some of them, so, um, I, I don't really have, uh, anything on my list that, that in my mind would hold up adoption, uh, this evening with the understanding that this is a bit of a living document as all of our plans should be and we should be on a, on a cadence of updates for them.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely think that there's some, some good questions that have come up and Kyle, you had some good, good points, and I did speak to Stephen this afternoon, sort of gave him a heads up, this is what's happening. And that he and I would touch base this week or next week to discuss comments that can, that come, that would arise tonight and that he and I would draft a memo back to the board addressing, uh, comments and that at the twenty-fourth meeting, uh, I could be prepared to, to have that resolution back in front of you for adoption.
Yes, um, one technical question I have, um, is there anywhere in the document that defines the material of a side path or a multi-use path?
I've wanted, I think there is.
Okay.
Because I had this question from DOT recently along East Street. You guys were calling for a side path along that area, and I want to say it's asphalt, maybe?
Yeah.
Asphalt side path?
I, I think it's a possibility, but yeah, I, you know, I may saw mention of side paths and multi-use paths. But I didn't ever, I didn't find in there where it defined what it was, and I thought that's probably intentional because you don't want to lock in a material.
Yeah, and, and I think what, one of the, the items that we could have as an implementation, uh, moving forward is developing, uh, standard for a side path. And in a situation, you know, this is what we're looking for, ten-foot asphalt side path and and really have standard construction details for that side path.
Yeah, because a lot of, well, there's a fair amount of, of time dedicated to the idea of, you know, multimodal, i.e. accessible as well to folks with full capability and folks with less capability.
Correct.
You know, and, and for me, that's an important feature of, um, you know, some of these things that I think are recreational in nature as well, and, um, I'd, I'd like to see them accessible to the, the most amount of people possible regardless of their physical, uh, abilities.
And, and Mr. Fioco, um, Jeff and I had a brief conversation, I believe it was about two weeks ago, about, uh, kind of to your point of you know, with road cross-sections, you know, you specify your width, uh, kind of your easement area that you need, which would be kind of like a greenway right-of-way, if you will. Um, or a sidewalk kind of right-of-way that you need, um, specifying the materials, you know, the depth, all that stuff. He and I, uh, spoke very briefly, so I won't hold Jeff to, to having anything prepared for today, because it was kind of a passing conversation, but um, I think that would, something like that would be beneficial, much like you would have in your development ordinance pertaining to, uh, roadways. You have the same with your, uh, pedestrian paths as well as your multi-use pass. Um, and in terms of, uh, kind of specifying what a particular path may be, when you go for DOT funding, you have to have pretty, um, uh, I won't say exact, but, uh, relatively precise. Um, and you, you experienced with that being in your vote with RPO, um, when you submit for bike ped projects. Um, and DOT wants to have a good, uh, comfort level that you're, you've properly vetted that into Mr. Ship's comment of the living document. That's one of the main things that's living is that, you know, you go through one bidding process for a sidewalk and realize that your number was really low and, and sidewalk's actually twice as expensive. Uh, but you need to update that pretty quickly within your plan and make it a little more malleable, uh, than anything else, so. Um, that'll help a ton as you look at the RPO level and try to get some funding. Um, and for those that aren't exposed to that, there's an eighty-twenty split where eighty percent's funded by DOT and twenty percent by the municipality for those projects. Um, but the project has to be a hundred thousand dollars, so they're, they're significant projects. Um, but there's some funding there, and I really can see there's some opportunity with this plan uh, being able to work towards that document and more of a, having the B-PAC be a steering committee to assist um, Theresa and her capacity on the RPO as well as, uh, Mr. Fioco's capacity.
Yeah, and, um, once we get a new town engineer, we can definitely consult with that person to help us with these cross-sections. I know it's been on our list back when, uh, Mr. Royal was with us and he was the town engineer and he and I were trying to figure out, uh, road cross-sections for projects in town, so it's something that we need. And, uh, I think we're going to be getting close to, to doing a new comprehensive transportation plan soon. And so we can, we can probably do some of that work, um, here shortly.
Thanks, Jeff.
So if I understand correctly, uh, planning has, is suggesting that we, uh, uh, move approval of this plan from tonight to the twenty-fourth, is that correct, Jeff?
That's correct, Mayor, um, and I would be willing to, to accept comments, um, you know, this week. I think Stephen and I could use next week to make any changes, so.
Okay.
If you find anything, Kyle, um, Michael, if you find anything that you want to send our way, please do so. Thank you, Kyle, for your comments today. Um, otherwise, we'll move forward with the comments we have, comments that we had tonight. And we'll be ready with a, a presentation next, uh, next meeting and hopefully, uh, a resolution for adoption.
Okay, well, and I would, uh, entertain a motion to table approval of the bicycle and pedestrian plan until, uh, the next meeting of the board on August twenty-fourth.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous, all right. Uh, so the next is the, uh, termination of the master agreement and then the master service agreement to replace, uh, Mr. Messick?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, might I ask for a three-minute recess?
Sure.
Second.
Second, all those in favor of a three-minute or four-minute recess? Ah, unanimous, I knew it would be, all right. Back in three or four minutes then. Let's see, I think we're all back.
Except Jeff.
Commissioner.
There he is.
There he is. I think we're all back. So that would now move to the uh, next item on the agenda, which is the uh, item four and five, both relating to the master service agreement. Mr. Messick?
Mr. Mayor, the, um, the, the first matter is the uh, resolution that's in your agenda package that terminates the master service agreement with um, Old North State Water Company. And it's pretty self-explanatory, but the town entered into this agreement a little over two years ago with Old North State uh, to own and, and manage the facility that's being constructed by Chatham Park, uh, out on sixty-four business. And um, things have evolved to the point where Old North State and Chatham Park are not going to be able to uh, do business and Chatham Park, Old North State has not been in a position to be able to comply with the contingency that was in the original agreement. And so in order for the um, master service agreement to be modified, uh, in order to satisfy the requirements of the MPDS permit, it has been recommended that the uh, town terminate the agreement with Old North State for the reasons of the uh, inability to um, satisfy the terms of the contract.
Any questions or discussion? Well, then I would, uh, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to uh, uh, approve the termination of the master service agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? That takes us then to the uh, new master service agreement. Again, Mr. Messick?
Mr. Mayor, in your agenda package, uh, there is a proposed new master service agreement between the town and the Chatham Park Investors LLC. That is substantially similar to the previous agreement with Old North State. Uh, there are some um, differences, of course, other than the name. And I'll be glad to try to highlight those, but basically the, the, the terms of the agreement are that Chatham Park will own the facility and will engage the services of a licensed operator uh, to actually manage and operate the facility. That it will accept wastewater that is generated from the service area for the facility, which is essentially Chatham Park uh, in the North Village. And treat it and either discharge it to um, back to the, the service area as reclaimed water or treat it and discharge into the Robeson Creek um, to the extent of the capacity of the facility, which is four hundred ninety-nine thousand gallons per day. If there are some, any questions about the, the agreement, uh, I'd be glad to address them. Mr. Eagle, representing Town Park, is also on the line and can answer any questions in that respect as well. Um,
Okay.
I would, but, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Uh, Paul?
Uh, in paragraph four of the agreement that's in your agenda package, uh, Mr. Eagle and I discovered this afternoon that perhaps there was some possibility of confusion with respect to the fact that th- this agreement would be effective upon uh, the approval of the town in, in Chatham Park. And there has been uh, wastewater that has been allocated in the, what, what is now going to be the service area that is going to the Pittsburgh wastewater treatment plant already. Um, and there may be future customers for the wastewater treatment plant as opposed to this facility. So we wanted to provide for the options that there that basically this agreement says that everything in the service area will be directed to the facility up to the four hundred ninety-nine thousand gallons per day. But there may be some that is going in a different direction or needs to go in a different direction. And that would be an exception to that obligation on the town. So just as an aside, the agreement with Sanford says that uh, you will send all the wastewater generated in Pittsburgh to Sanford, except for the wastewater that goes to this particular facility. Um, so you'll have a commitment on both sides to send wastewater one place to the other.
Any questions for Mr. Messick?
Yes, um, Mr. Messick, I'm, I'm more concerned about uh, what happens if a violation occurs at either the Small Street Plant uh, during some interim period or U-Banks Road Plant eventually. Can you tell us? What happened?
That depends on how, how the permit from the state is to be constructed. But at the present time, and this agreement is consistent with that. Uh, if, if both Chatham Park and the town were permitees of the MPDS permit, then both would be responsible to the state of North Carolina for any violations. This agreement uh, would provide that, I mean, the state would prefer to be able to contact and deal with one entity and not two. So to the extent that um, MPDS permit were violated in some uh, treatment uh, standard, the state would look to one entity or the other, and then we'd have to get uh, in um, repaid or reimbursed or whatever from, from the other entity. So it depends on who's doing the violating and what the uh, the, the nature of it would be. But this provides that, that whoever has to pay can get reimbursed from the other party.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
And uh, I, I, I have not been able to get through to that point yet. Um, but um, I'm hearing you saying that there is legal recourse in the case of a, an improper release of nutrients, say, from the U-Banks Road Plant?
Yes, to the extent that the town were penalized as a result of that, um, it could recover that from Chatham Park. To the extent that it's a town violation that somehow or other causes uh, Chatham Park to have to pay, then Chatham Park would seek reimbursement from the town. The benefit of the joint MPDS permit is that the town's existing wastewater treatment plant would benefit, hopefully, uh, from the higher grade treatment standards that the, this facility will allow. The, the proposal is to have the limits, the treatment limits for both facilities combined for purposes of reporting to the state.
Right.
So there shouldn't be less violation or the potential for less violation than there would be otherwise.
Yes, I, I recall it's, it's a newer plan. It'll be uh, designed with state of the art. And I, I, I also understand that, or recalled that um, the, the plant was originally described to us as intending to have, for example, ozone treatment. And um, I'm curious if that still stands.
I have no idea. I don't know if Mr. Eagle knows that or not.
A good evening from uh, Oak Island, Mayor and Commissioners.
Welcome, Ken.
Happy to be with you this evening from a hundred and seventy miles away. Um, I am not an engineer. I'm not a wastewater treatment operator. I have no idea, Mr. Bonnet. So I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that question. If it was in the original design, I've got to assume that it's, you know, in, incorporated into the facility, but um, that's just beyond my uh, knowledge base.
Okay. I guess I, I have several questions that are along those same lines, wondering what, what are our physical control options? Uh, the town uh, sewer treatment plant operator presumably will be responsible for that outflow there at the Small Street Plant, including the outflow from all the way that up the two-mile pipe from the U-Banks Road Plant. And so will, will stand, will town staff control the valve at the start of that two-mile pipe from U-Banks to Small Street?
It, it's my understanding that the, the um, U-Banks Road Facility will have to, you know, sample the effluent coming in and going out and report that to the town and to the state. Um, and the town will have the right under this agreement to sample it as well. If there is a, a violation, then presumably it would not be accepted. But there is, you know, as the, in the nature of these things, it's my understanding that there would be a delay between the time a sample is pulled and, and the time a report is generated. So it's, it may be that it would take some time to find out whether the effluent was being treated properly or not. And I'm not sure how you deal with that. But to the extent that, that um, the town has the right to check whatever effluent is coming out.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Paul, you mentioned that um, the combined flow from our treatment plant and the new facility would achieve better alignment with the discharge limits of the state.
That is the goal.
That, and that, that's what we think is going to happen, that this new plant will treat it to such a degree that it will help change the average discharge when it combines with our discharge to get a better reading on the limits, closer aligning with regulation. And that will occur for a certain period of time until the plant is converted to a pump station to Sanford, at which time the effluent discharge to Robeson Creek will be yet even cleaner. Because it won't, it will no longer co-mingle with our treatment.
Right.
Train.
Right.
I think the other thing that I wanted to mention in your description of where the flow would go um, was that um, you, you did not mention the three M contract. And of course, that's part of the agreement as well, that this plant will be providing us the reuse water that we're contracted to provide to three M. So it will either go out as reused to Chatham Park, the three M, or discharged to Robeson.
It, it will come to three M first before it goes back to uh, Chatham Park.
Okay.
Anything further?
The, the fees that are mentioned in exhibit B, I realize they were part of the old agreement as well, but is that five percent for the first ten years? A calculated value that will cover the cost or is it five percent?
I think it's five percent.
Well, I guess is, is.
The assumption, the, it, the assumption is that the rates that these uh, customers will pay will be the same rates as any other customer in town. Ninety-five percent of the fee revenues that are collected from those customers will be remitted to Chatham Park or the operator of, of the facility. The town would retain five percent under this agreement for the uh, ti- time and billing effort and collections and the administrative costs of, of the system. But all other revenues would go to, to Chatham Park.
Right. I, I guess my question is, have we calculated that the, that five percent of the revenue will cover our administrative costs? Or how was that number chosen?
I don't think that the town has entered into any kind of rate study um, either before or since that there has been a commitment by the board that the rates will not go up as a result of the Sanford transaction. But it could go up for other reasons as well. Um, so no, I don't, I, I, there, I'm not sure what the rationale for the ninety-five-five split was.
My recollection, Kyle, was there was some um, analysis done by Old North State. And I believe that um, the town had a consultant, I forget their name right now. They helped us with quite a number of things.
Davenport.
Davenport. That I, I understood they had kind of confirmed the five percent was um, a figure that would cover the administrative costs.
Okay, I, I'd certainly leave, leave that up to someone else. I just want to make sure we're not operating a, a money-losing venture here, if we at least cover our costs.
Well, I think the theory is that this will be a new system. Um, it shouldn't break. Operation and maintenance should not be that much. At least for the short term.
I, I recall that as well, Commissioner Fioco, that it was Davenport and Associates that did uh, reassure us about the sufficiency of that five percent. I, I'm um, I'm curious if, if um, we uh, from town perspective, have had any engineering input on this new master agreement.
Uh, no, sir.
Given that we're uh, without an engineer or, we have an interim right now, I, I would at very least like to linger on this document further, be able to read it more carefully. Um, but I would greatly prefer that we have um, an engineer accountable to town review this document. It's a very important uh, agreement and um, just want to make sure that we're. It's a very important, uh, agreement, and, um, just want to make sure that we're, we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed, and it's a complex situation, I think. Given that, um, there's two different plants with two different ownership. Two different operations contributing to one outfall.
I, I would just point out, uh, and, and certainly to get a, you know, engineer review of this is certainly not an issue, I don't think. But the town has applied for the MPDS permit.
Yes.
And it applied for it in the name of, uh, the Chatham Park Reclaimed Water Company, which, uh, is not going to be the owner or operator of this facility. So until the town enters into some sort of master service agreement with Chatham Park, the MPDS permit, uh, application cannot go forward. And so it will be held up for that length of time. So time is, uh, important from that respect.
Understood.
Paul, has this agreement changed in any way, shape or form other than to replace the name of Old North State with Chatham Park?
Yes, some, some slight things that, that have been changed substantively. And I gave Mr. Ship, uh, a highlighted version, which I did not keep, so it's kind of hard to tell. The termination provisions are different, uh, in this one, it is more advantageous to the town. If the town were to default in the, um, performance of this agreement, then Chatham Park could not cut off the service to the customers, uh, until a judge had decided whether the town was in default or not. This provides for identification, uh, by Chatham Park in the event of any issues with Old North State arising out of the old agreement, which was obviously not part of the first one. As far as the, you know, the rates and the, and the payment provisions and the vouchers, um, plan, no, that there's no change in that. So substantively, it's pretty much the same. I think that the changes have been to the town's benefit. And again, I could give you a marked up red line version of it if you're interested.
Well, I am very sensitive to the delays we have experienced, um, with the state, with the federal agencies involved. You know, we've got an acute situation where we're, um, you know, dealing with someone who's requesting, you know, what we would say would normally think is small amount of effluent, but it's, you know, a critical issue. And I think moving forward, the more delay, the more risk we put, um, businesses, folks who want to do business, who want to open businesses, start new businesses. I mean, if there is not, i- if, if the subs- substantive changes are to the benefit of the town, I don't think we should delay. Because every, if we, we wait two weeks, that's going to turn into two months. You know, we submitted, uh, it's my understanding, a document for the NPDS and, uh, Fish and Wildlife for one month. Didn't go to the office to pick up the document to review, so we're a month behind already on that. You know, it's, 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 if it weren't so serious, it'd be comical. So, you know, I, I think we are relying on Mr. Messick to make sure in a legal document that it is not substantially different than an agreement we've already got in place when we're simply trying to change the name of the entity that will be the owner of the plant, um, which I understand that the state is requiring that we do. So I'll make a motion to approve.
There are a motion to approve, is there a second?
I, I'll second just a, a comment that, Mr. Messick, I do appreciate you providing that marked up copy, you know, I would ask in the future in similar situations that we, we do provide that, um, because it's pretty difficult to get through a lot of these documents, particularly with my limited knowledge of legal. So, uh, that was, that was helpful to look at the, the key sections in, in the, the changes there.
But motion's been made to approve and it's been seconded by Commissioner Ship, all those in favor?
So the, uh, discussion?
Yes, yes, certainly.
Yeah.
Fire for more discussion, sure.
And now that we're knowing that there's a red line copy out there, that, that would, that would have been helpful. As well, I'm curious if, if we're all comfortable, I mean, we, we had, um, I think it was Hydrostructures was deeply involved with the application and, and, um, I, I would just very much like to hear, uh, Hydrostructures' thoughts on, on the document now that five years have passed and, uh, we have new circumstances and we don't know who the operator will be and, I, I'm not interested in delaying this, I am interested in making sure that we've, uh, we've got, uh, the best document that serves the interests of the town taxpayers and the ratepayers. And I think Hydrostructures could probably turn that around for us fairly quickly.
Any further discussion?
I'm curious if Commissioner Farrell, uh, Commissioner Baldwin might have thoughts in particular on that question?
Uh, it's a pretty in-depth, uh, agreement. I just scanned out it, I did not get all the way through it honestly.
My question basically is, if this is the same document that was initially signed, except for a few minor changes, then I don't have a problem with it. But I do have a question about, uh, the term under number eight. And it says unless, I, it's talked about termination, I know it's a forty-year contract and then addition renewed for additional ten-year periods. So I'm trying to figure out what it says unless earlier terminated as provided in disagreement, by the agreement of the, the parties. I did not see where I, that was referred to. The earlier termination, where is that at in this, in this particular agreement, I didn't see it.
Well, it, it would be partially addressed in the next paragraph where it talks about default and termination for default.
Okay.
If the town were to default in some aspect of this agreement, then theoretically termination is a possibility. The, the obligation of the town is to one, pay the money, and two, to, uh, direct flow towards the facility. So.
Okay, the other.
Termination could also be on, excuse me.
I missed that, you went out a minute, Mr. Messick.
I mean, the, the fault can go both ways, I mean, if, if Chatham Park were to default in its obligations, then there would be, um, possibilities of remedies for the town. But again, termination of the contract and leaving, you know, customers without wastewater treatment is not a, really a possibility for much of any, any, either by, either side.
Right, right. Right, so my other question is, uh, about, of course, that in the event the town, that the town and the town so discretion decides it no longer desires to maintain the ownership of the permit, to renew so forth and so on, then we could transfer it to, uh, Chatham Park. Is it a stipulation in there for Chatham Park? It says they do not want anything else to do with the permit, that they will tra- transfer it, everything back to the town, or is that necessary?
Well, they don't, they don't own the permit, they're just going to be a permit, a joint permittee with the town, hopefully, if, if the state agrees, on a DNPDS permit modification that will be for the, the four hundred and ninety-nine thousand gallons of wastewater to be treated, uh, to go into Robeson Creek.
Okay. So one other question, Mr. Messick, is this, so again, are there any major changes to this document?
Other than what I just mentioned, as, as far as Mr. Ship's questions were concerned. Changing the name, adding the termination provision about, uh, not cutting off the customers.
Indemnity.
But yeah, the indemnity of, for the, um, Old North State issues.
Thank you.
I believe that's it.
Okay. Okay, that answers my concerns, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Well, um, given, given that we are without an engineer full-time on town staff, you know, I am curious, what would be our recourse if the U-Banks Road Plant were built, uh, and called complete without all of the components that were originally presented to this board when we, uh, were motivated to, uh, originally to engage in all these agreements? Mr. Messick?
Well, you know, from a zoning standpoint, you've approved the site plan and whatever is on the site plan presumably will have to be implemented. The technology for treatment, I'm not so sure that the town has any, uh, right to control that. The byproduct of the facility will certainly be subject to the regulation by the state. And, and this agreement that it will meet the treatment standards that are required, but as far as, you know, in particular, I, I don't know whether, if ozone is an issue, I'm not sure whether, if it is or it isn't included in the treatment process, that that's something that the town has any right to, uh, to be involved in. But so I don't know what, exactly what you're, you're getting at.
Well, uh, I'd like, like to see that, that, that that plant, which was sold to us as a, a very unique and, um, state-of-the-art plant with, um, technologies that were, um, said to be, uh, green and, um, worthy of, of, and becoming a, a tourist attraction, uh, having tourists go through there, you know, that, that's complexity, and, um, there's risk with that. And, um, there's also complexity in just having the two, the ownership model of the town not controlling and owning both plants, controlling, owning and operating both plants, so.
That's true, but that, that issue was decided two years ago, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and this master services agreement, uh, reinforces that. And, uh, it does so in a different environment where we're presumably trying to, uh, smooth things out with the state regulators to help them approve this, so, um, I don't know. I don't know, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable not having a town engineer look at it. So.
Okay, any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve, it's been seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, four. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the bonus allocation agreement with Chatham Park, and again, Mr. Messick, you're up. Uh, this matter has been discussed in the past, uh, to some extent. This is a, um, more formal, uh, resolution and agreement that deals with the issue of a bonus allocation that the state law has allowed for contribute, local contributions to the state highway system, um, under certain cir- circumstances. If local communities contribute to the cost of those improvements, the state will allow a, a bonus allocation of up to fifty percent of the cost of those improvements. This particular, um, resolution and agreement deals with the Chatham Parkway that you all had some, uh, acquaintance with a couple of meetings ago, and Chatham Park is willing to donate that, uh, right of way to the town and for eventual dedication and/or, um, conveyance by the town to the Department of Transportation. DOT has calculated the value of that land and has provided for a bonus allocation eligibility of one point nine million dollars, which is referred to in, in the resolution and the agreement. In the event that, um, a suitable additional road right of way is constructed by the developer in Chatham Park, the bonus allocation that would be attributable to the dedication of the Chatham Parkway would be available to reimburse the developer. This agreement, uh, deals with that possibility and that process. The bonus allocation itself would have to be set up with a contract between the town and DOT. But this is to, uh, provide for an agreement between the town and Chatham Park that if there is a bonus allocation and if there is the additional roadway constructed that's on the, uh, town's, uh, transportation plan, that Chatham Park will be reimbursed to the extent of the bonus allocation that's attributable to this. There may be future, um, bonus allocation agreements about future roads, uh, in Chatham Park that are being, um, constructed and, um, on land owned by Chatham Park and Chatham Park may be contributing money to the cost of those improvements. So this is, this is the first, uh, allocation agreement, but there may be others as, as we go on. If anybody has any questions about, uh, either Mr. Eagle or I can try and answer those.
All the, uh, bonus allocation, uh, regimen, I, I think includes a timeframe within which the money must be applied. Is, is my understanding correct that the other project for which this money could be allocated, that that construction project must occur within a certain period of time? And I thought it was five years.
I do not know the answer to that. This agreement provides that the, the towns, the receipt by the town from DOT of the bonus allocation would be promptly paid to the developer. So, so there's no time lag in there, but when the town gets the bonus allocation, that's to be seen, remains to be seen.
But it's my understanding the bonus allocation is payable when the other project is completed.
Yes.
And it was my understanding that that other project had a timeframe on it. And I, and I thought it was five years.
Could be, I don't know.
Jeff, do you recall, uh, you know, didn't we meet with Brandon and he mentioned, uh, the timeframe?
Yeah, I, I do believe that there was some timeframe, five years sounds rememberable, and that's what I would have guessed as well.
I believe I would, Mr. Fiocco had added that, I think the reimbursement can be paid as the project is being constructed. I don't necessarily think it has to wait until the end, as, as invoices get submitted and, and bills are paid. I think that it can be done during the, during the process. And I, I, I seem to remember a time limit being discussed as well, I just don't remember what it is.
And I don't recall if it was a time limit to complete the project or start the project. Suggested was to start the project.
Further discussion or questions?
Just a point of clarification, this is a bonus allocation, this bonus allocation is based on the cost of constructing Chatham Parkway, but the reimbursement would be. based on constructing another road that is not Chatham Parkway?
Not right on both counts. This is for the land only in this particular situation. Future, the future Chatham Parkway on the north, on the other side of the bypass will include the value of the land and the monetary cost of, of the improvements. Because they're getting in on the ground floor rather than after the fact here. So the, the, the calculation of the allocation, the 50% could include land or land plus improvements.
Mr. Schiff, it is, it, it is going to be related to another, a different road in terms of another road being constructed for the, for the reimbursement funds or the bonus allocation funds to be applied to. So that, that part is right, just won't be, the other road to be constructed won't be the rest of Chatham Parkway way from where it stops now over to 15501. That's the project Mr. Messick was talking about where the Chatham Park will, will donate land and contribute funds for that project. And that, again, that would be bonus allocation that would go toward a different road.
Okay, right, so, so that's what I was thinking. Generally, this is not reimbursement for what has been done, it's reimbursement for a huge.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Listen, there are also discussion in the past that put in question to what project that bonus allocation might be applied. I seem to recall conversation about whether or not that should be the widening of Highway 87. For completion of a, an actual proper truck bypass around downtown. Or some other projects. In fact, I think Commissioner Fiocco, you had in a meeting with the Secretary of Department of Transportation. I, I heard a story that you were, stood quite strongly for the interests of town and the question of sequencing of road projects in regards to this bonus allocation.
I did attend such a meeting and honestly, my interest in the bonus allocation was to put it towards the project that is second in priority to the traffic circle in the downtown vision plan, and that is the improvements from the courthouse north to Hank Street. I subsequently learned from the meeting that I had with Jeff and the division, NC DOT Division Engineer, I was informed that it had to be on a highway project. And at that point, I relinquished my interest and dream of having the roadways, Hillsborough Street improved. Cause that would go all the way to the buildings, including the sidewalks, which I think we need help on. And realized that it needed to be spent on one of the highway projects identified in our thoroughfare plan, so. That's where I think it, it makes a lot of sense. Chatham Park is building several of those roadways and you know, it makes it that much more cost effective if you can recycle half the cost of the previous project, so. I think it makes a lot of sense.
I think it'd be really great if we could get the quarry traffic out of our downtown area. And I thought that that was why you and, and Mayor Perry had advocated so strongly for prioritization right behind Chatham Parkway for projects that would run from 15, excuse me, from Highway 64 down to 902. Effectively giving us a truck bypass around town. And I was grateful to hear that.
I think that project has been priced at about $10 million.
That, that project, John, that you're referring to is a modernization of NC 80, NC 87. It is on, we, it is on the STIP program for 28, 29 year. It is currently unfunded, but it has been scored and is situated in a, in a, in a cycle that can be funded. That project will need to be re-scored in the next prioritization cycle, but I believe that since it scored well enough in the past, it will score well enough in the future and continue to move up the, the ladder to receive DOT funding. Obviously, if there is monies that the town or development can put towards projects, that moves projects up the ladder sooner.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, I think that the, the traffic and the presence of those rumbling trucks and of course, the pollution associated with them would be really, really important to get out of downtown and that would really make our downtown more attractive. And, and so I was so pleased to hear that, that that conversation had taken place with the Secretary of Department of Transportation, Commissioner Fiocco, and I, I was very pleased to hear that you and Mayor Perry had stood, stood so strongly for that. So yeah, I'm, I'm eager to see this bonus allocation go towards the immediate interests of town. Downtown in particular.
Mr. Bonis, this agreement provides that the additional road to receive the reimbursement from the bonus allocation would be on the town's right away, I mean thoroughfare plan, but it would be mutually determined by the developer and the town. So it, Chatham Park contemplated that it would be a Chatham Park Street road.
Thank you for that clarification.
I don't think 87 is on our thoroughfare plan.
I wonder why? Why not?
I think the thoroughfare plan envisions the big expressway on the west side of town. Which is a brand new, brand new facility.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion, the bonus allocation?
Well, could we get some reassurance that that we might have an actual timeframe for Chatham Parkway South?
I think that is on the STIP for 2027. Is that right, Jeff? Am I remembering that correctly? Or is that the north portion?
I think the south portion is received funding for alignment study and, and engineering and environmental work. I'm not sure if it's full construction. But they did receive, it, it, that, that particular project, that leg of Chatham Park did receive some funding for some work to be done, but I want to say that Chatham Parkway North is, is more like what are we in 20 now, 23, 24, 25 timeframe?
Yeah, and, and I thought it would, the whole loop would be completed in 27.
And that, that, that may be, that may be the case.
And honestly, we'll, we'll reviewing some of that information Thursday.
Correct.
Anything else?
Mayor probably is rather obvious, but when you look at the agreement, the, the town manager information is, is nondescript. So obviously just insert my information there again.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Two seconds. All right. All those in favor?
All for discussion, I will.
Or you can have more discussion.
Thank you.
I will simply note and, and add that if it's not clear from this conversation, that my prior understanding was that in, in a meeting with the Secretary of Transportation, that one commissioner and the mayor had the understanding that these bonus allocation funds were the towns to decide how to utilize. And at that time, I understood that there was a priority for using those funds to get truck bypass completed on the west side of town, running from Highway 64 down to 902, which would eliminate that downtown traffic from that downtown truck traffic. So those supporting this resolution are giving up those funds for that potential project.
Anything else?
John, I, I would just mention that it appears as though the Chatham Parkway bypass will be constructed prior to the ability to get the 87 project up and running, so I think we're doing this as quickly as we can, because I think there is a shared interest in getting those vehicles out of downtown.
The, the, this, the Chatham Parkway North won't, won't remove those vehicles.
No, but I think the south will, and I think if that comes online in 2027 or 2028, that is ahead of 87 in the scoring and the timeframe.
Any further?
Call the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have Commissioner Fiocco, Commissioner Schiff. Any other ayes? Okay, those opposed? Pamela Baldwin, Commissioner Baldwin, aye?
Aye.
Good. All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next item is the presentation on emerging contaminants by CDM Smith.
All right, can you hear my audio?
I can hear you fine, Reed.
Okay. So my name is Reed Barton. It's good to be back with the town's leadership. I'm here with Bill Dobigan. Bill, can you wave at everyone?
Hi, everyone.
Nope.
I think Bill's, Bill's setting up a PowerPoint to share with you guys. So I, I I don't know. We're not, we're not seeing it yet. I don't know if it was wisdom to leave the engineering presentation till this late at night, but I'll make sure to wake, wake you guys up at the end. No, but we've been asked to give an update on the ongoing pilot test project, which is a piece of the overall program to expand the water treatment plant and, and address emerging contaminants in it. So we're here to give an update. We don't have conclusions tonight, but I think we can give you you know, a, a good update and answer any questions. I'll say that if you have any questions along the way, feel free to stop us. Otherwise, we'll just keep, keep rolling. So Bill, go ahead and go to the next slide. There you go. So to frame the, I'm just a couple of slides to frame everything, because it's been, it's been a while since we last talked. And, and this may, everybody may have this, but I think it's good to make sure we're all on the same page. So the purpose of the project and really a string of projects is to address issues of quality and quantity at the, in the Pittsburgh drinking water system. The drivers of the quality side are PFAS, which stands for per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, which are a very commonly used chemical and manufacturing processes that are found in the Hall River from industrial and wastewater discharges upstream. As well as a few other contaminants, and we've lumped those together and called them target contaminants. And, and one of the slides later will identify what the, the main focus of those, the main contaminants we're targeting with this study. And then the other issue that we're trying to address with this project is the issue of growing population means a growing water demand. And at some point here in the not so distant future, the town's capacity of water treatment, which is 2 million gallons a day, will eventually become not enough on peak summer days or peak summer months. And so before that happens, the plant needs to be expanded. And so the approach here at the bottom, in summary, is Pittsburgh's water plant needs upgrades to incorporate advanced treatment and an expansion of its capacity. So Bill, go to the next slide. So I want to point out, because we're going to talk about some numbers of, you know, these chemicals and how that, how different treatment approaches are performing in our pilot test to remove them. But before going into that, I want to make it clear and put it on the public record. Just make, this has been on the public record before, that Pittsburgh had a very rapid response to PFAS in the river. And, and the response was that the plant, the, the staff and, and town's leadership moved to install a powdered activated carbon system in 2016 to treat and remove a substantial portion of the PFAS compounds that are in the river. This is what we call a near term, a, a short term approach. It's more expensive to operate this type of system. Not necessarily what you want to do for 20 years, but it was with no doubt, the best short term reaction the town could take. So that's something that should be noted. And if, if, if folks are calling you as town leaders and asking, what are you doing? I mean, that's a good starting point is to remind them in 2016, you added a type of advanced treatment that we call powder activated carbon. Okay, Bill, go to the next one. So this path that we're on can, at a very 30,000 foot, a very high level can be summed up in, in these five steps. The first one, water supply and treatment study is completed. The second one, a pilot evaluation and ultimately recommending one treatment approach going forward is where we are right now, the orange dot. What could be overlapped with it is the yellow dot, and I'll, I'll make a couple of comments about that later on. And then the, the biggest steps are the green and the blue, which is after you have charted a course and said, this is what we're going to do. Design it, permit it, bid it, and construct it. So that's, that's the general plan. Go ahead, Bill. So, all right, that, that was the framing of the discussion. The, I'll summarize a few pertinent decisions that were made in, in the last phase of the project. And then Bill will talk about the treatment technologies that are being tested and, and show you some pictures of the pilot study and some data. And then we'll talk about next steps. Go ahead, Bill. Okay, so the summer, summary of water supply and treatment study decisions. First of all, th- this is from the water supply and treatment study, and this is a projection of how much demand for water there is in the town. The blue line, the blue dots is really what I'd want to draw your attention to, and that's max day condition. So if you're not familiar with water systems, generally people water their lawns more, golf courses, water. Demand for water are more, is more in the summer. So in summer months is usually when we see a peak in demand. And that's oftentimes where systems are looking, when they're thinking about, when is my next expansion coming? I need to be prepared for a max day, max month. So you see the arrow pointing down that says 2 MGD, which stands for 2 million gallons a day. So the plant currently can treat 2 million gallons a day. And as you can see, according to this projection, even though the data is a few years old, it, it shouldn't be terribly far off. It's a, you know, more or less says that the, the town could get to needing 2 million gallons a day as soon as 2023. So that's the, the, one of the drivers for a quick schedule to a lot of this. The other driver is the need to get these contaminants out of the water. Go ahead, Bill. So the, the overall water supply study, which looked at a broad range of ways that you could meet water, overall water supply for the town for the long term, went, went decades out into the future and, and set a course, set a plan, said, all right, we've looked at the four or five ways you we've looked at the four or five ways you can get water. Here's prioritization for do, we recommend doing them in this order. Do this project, then five to ten years later, do this project. And and so that that's what the report laid out. I won't go into all that, but these three bullets I wanted to summarize from that report. So it recommended, we we narrowed it down to about three different technologies and and really a combination of different those different technologies. And we recommended the town do a screening level pilot study at the water plant to determine which ones are going to treat your water the best. And we'll, and so that that's something that we have moved forward with and are in right now. After that, we'll we'll use the data from that study to create a true life cycle cost comparison. So you'll know exactly over the thirty forty year life of the system, which what their true cost is. The other conclusion was to go after project funding. There's a lot of project funding opportunities right now. Some of the deadlines are coming up here in the next couple of months. And and I know getting a low interest loan or even some grants is highly beneficial to to a large project like this. Third bullet is just the recommendation overall to proceed with design and construction quickly. I meaning in the fiscal year we're currently in, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And and that is still that that's very much achievable. We just have to keep making progress and making decisions as we go forward, and we'll talk about that. Go to the next slide, Bill. Okay, so if you wanted to know what is in the current contract with C D M Smith to services to perform, this is the list of things we are tasked with working on under the project of the pilot study. We are to design and construct a pilot system at the water treatment plant that was completed. We are to conduct six months of continuous pilot studying. That is completed. But one thing we're going to talk to you about a little bit later is extending that period, leaving the pilot running a couple more months. We are another task under the contract is evaluate the results, prepare that life cycle cost comparison, help the town with establishing a treatment goal. That's pretty important because it will guide all of your decisions. How you weigh the options really comes down to what is my goal? And and we can help you put words to that. And we can talk about that later if if desired. It's not in the main bulk of our slides. Recommend a treatment approach, and we have as an optional task, it needs authorization to to assist with funding and funding applications, but that's in there as an allowance. Go to the next slide, Bill. So, okay, hold on. So I'm going to pass over to Bill. Bill is going to talk very briefly about the treatment technologies that we're 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 using right now. And then he's going to launch into telling you about the pilot study results. So take it away, Bill.
Great. Thank you, Reed. First, Mayor Ness, did you have a comment?
No, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, okay. All right. So let me talk about the treatment technologies for targeted contaminants. And when we say target contaminants, here are the ones of the most interest. Per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, the PFAS compounds you've heard about, are the greatest concern in the river. Then one for dioxane, probably second, though the concentrations just this year are are quite a bit lower, and we'll talk about that in a moment. And then bromide and brominated compounds, because bromide in the water tends to react in the disinfection process to form brominated disinfection byproducts, which some are regulated and more will be regulated in the future. And finally, we also want to keep attention on broad spectrum, personal care and pharmaceutical products. None of those are issues as far as regulatory compliance at this time, but they are of concern with respect to water quality. So this shows you the advanced treatment technologies that we have been using for removal of targeted contaminants. And we are pilot testing all of these for you right now. So these are full scale facilities, for examples, ion exchange on the far left. You can see it uses pressure vessels. So the ion exchange resin is inside of the blue tanks you're seeing there. Low pressure reverse osmosis are rolled up sheets of membrane that are in each of those long white eight inch diameter pressure vessels. And then granular activated carbon is typically in pressure vessels, but it can also be in filters like your existing filters at your water plant. And then finally, UV advanced oxidation process involves using UV reactors and adding some peroxide or other oxidant. So let's go to the pilot study. So this is the basement filter gallery, if you will, of your water plant. And you can see quite a bit of pilot testing underway. We actually have nine different trains we're testing, so we can test different granular activated carbons. And those are shown in the four inch, the larger diameter clear PVC columns are all G A C. And the two inch columns, the the smaller columns of clear PVC, all have different ion exchange resin. So those are being tested in parallel. And the U V A O P is there also. And then the low pressure reverse osmosis is being tested. Here, it's the pressure vessel. It's very similar to what you saw in the full scale facility. But these are in your high service pump station, so we can utilize the pressure of your high service pumps to push the water through the R O. As far as test results, we wanted to firstly do by showing what your fast track powdered carbon has done for you. It's removing forty-two to sixty-three percent of the total PFAS. And it's largely getting the long chain, which are the ones that are currently having a health advisory. PFAS plus PFOA are both long chain. So it's helping you with that to stay in compliance with that health advisory. But it's not removing the short chain PFAS compounds, and there's quite a few of those. And that's what the pilot testing shows removal for. So this is a graph of the total PFAS that gets through your existing plant and is hence C zero, the concentration coming into the pilot plant. And then we plot C over C zero, so C is the concentration out of the pilot train. So once it gets up to the number one, that means that the concentration coming into that train is the same as the concentration going out of that train. So that train is spent, exhausted, if you will. So that's what we say with that blue box, outlet concentration equal to inlet concentration. Parenthesis, media is exhausted when it reaches the red line, to simplify things there. So if you look, we have quite a few of the trains, the treatment trains are approaching the red line. They're not.
Bill, we had a question. I think Commissioner Ship had a question.
Yeah, I think you might be getting to this right now, actually, but part of the goal of this study was to get to that exhaustion point of the media to calculate maintenance costs over time, correct?
Yes, exactly. That's to know how much cost it will be to estimate the cost to replace G A C ion exchange, et cetera. And you can see that we're getting there for a number of the curves, but we also have four different trains that are still down very close to zero, meaning full removal of the PFAS. So one of the things we uncovered here, and it's good for the town, it will save you money long term, but we need to run the pilot plant longer. We need to run another three to four months to know how all of these curves will shake out. Yeah, good question, good comment.
Now, Bill, can I throw something in there? Just because some of the comments the commissioners made on some of the prior presentations about you know, cutting edge technology. Commissioner Bonnet, you were commenting on that and just the desire for the town to take leadership role on on in its facilities. One of the things that the data we're seeing come out of this, you know, when this product, when this is done and we've in Pittsburgh, it's on its way to 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 having a treatment designed and constructed, you know, Bill, Bill and I will probably end up, you know, asking permission from you guys to publish a paper on this, because some of the data coming out here is supporting some real new advancements in PFAS treatment. The most notably is there is no use. There is no use, to our knowledge, of UV in front of these media before. And the reason we put UV in front of it was because of the one for dioxane. But what we're seeing is a the right word is a Bill, what they're they're they are working together in a way to kind of multiply their impact.
Yeah, it's making the organics more biodegradable, which makes the G A C and the ion exchange last longer, which is good. It'll save you money, but it also means the pilot plant needs to run a little longer.
That's terrific news.
It it, I mean, you know, PFAS treatment is not something you can pull in up in a textbook. You know, it's it's something where I can tell you Bill contributed to EPA has been writing a manual to try and help practitioners know what to do, and Bill contributed to it. And it, you know, it's not published yet, but it, you know, the the science behind PFAS is very exploratory at this point. The sign behind removing PFAS, and and part of that's because there are thousands of PFAS compounds out there. But I I mean, I, from what we're seeing, not only is it good news for Pittsburgh, but I think this is an outcome the data is is showing an outcome that I think the rest of you know, the 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 country needs to be aware of. Those involved in water treatment. It's pretty pretty remarkable, actually.
Reed, did you say that the U V upstream of the other treatment train was reducing dioxane substantially?
The the purpose of us including UV lamps, Bill, go back to the picture of the pilot. I think that's a little more helpful. The other one, there you go. So see those silver tubes kind of in the middle? Those are those are ultraviolet lamps. So the it's a it's a UV bulb and water is flows on all sides of the UV lamp. So you get a lot lot of radiation, UV radiation hitting all sides of the water. We're using those because that is one of the most proven methods for one for dioxane reduction. So your two ways of getting rid of one for dioxane, there's a third, but it's too expensive for the way your plant's set up. So we've we've reduced it to two, and it's UV lamps or it's reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis would physically capture it because it's such a tight pore membrane. The UV lamps break it down, if you will, oxidize it.
Which is all the more reason you wanted ahead of the other treatment techniques to to then allow biodegradation of the biodegradable organic compounds.
Yeah.
I think most recently, we've heard that, I think, on the intake, that dioxane had essentially disappeared from the Hall River.
Yeah, and that's in a, we've got a slide on that and a couple, about three more slides. But but yes, the last couple sets of sample, more than a couple, all the samples we've taken in the pilot study period have been below detection limits for one for dioxane.
And so if that's the case, how how have you determined that? If you're not taking in dioxane, how have you determined that the UV light is helping remove it?
Well, we know that you, go ahead, Bill.
The U V A O P is a fairly proven technology for removing one for dioxane. We we've done it as a company for haz waste cleanup, things like that. We've tested it before and demonstrated it. It is a technique for oxidizing the one for dioxane. That's why it's in the treatment process for this pilot. But a- as you're getting to, this year, we've had seven sampling events, and it's been non detect in the one for dioxane. And we think that's largely due to this special order of consent, the state kind of cracking down on one for dioxane in the watershed.
Right, so I I guess I'm asking if if it's if the crackdown is helping remove it from the intake, how have we determined that the testing of the treatment is actually removing the dioxane when it's not present to begin with?
That's a that's a limitation of of the pilot study so far, is that while we have we we have other tests from other cities and other pilots that we can point to and say, well, we got sixty percent removal, eighty percent removal there. We don't have site specific removal data for one for dioxane at the Pittsburgh Water Plant, because it hasn't been in the water when we sampled.
Right, so that's in our preliminary conclusions that that's additional data is needed to prove that. We're hoping for a detection of one for dioxane, so we can actually prove that performance. But we do have results from other plants where we've done that.
But I I thought that we were also talking about the superiority of the UV preceding these other technologies for destruction of PFAS compounds.
Yeah, so it it makes the G A C and the ion exchange last longer. In this particular graph, if you compare the brown curve that ends at about point two five to the yellow curve that ends about point four or five, the only difference in those is that it has the U V A O P ahead of the G A C. So it's making the brown curve, meaning making the G A C last longer.
And the value of that, there's there's a lot of values to it, but one of them is that the overall, the majority of the cost, I know the price tag for construction is probably more than a lot, you know, most town projects, you know, that's kind of the way water and wastewater utilities go is the capital costs are pretty high, but but the true cost of this system is the operating cost. It's the thirty years of replacing this media. It will be, it it is, you know, we'll we'll have numbers in the end, but it is usually a big number.
And and Reed, what you're suggesting is that the we we sort of happened into this solution that is not generally known of putting UV before the G A C because of our unique conditions, and this is something that you're wanting to kind of populate to a larger audience.
Yeah, so I I don't have a graphic to show you to break it down real simple, but I'll I'll try to do this verbally. So we we identified, I think it was four alternatives that on paper would do the best job. And it was a lot of GAC with UV, a lot of ion exchange with UV, or mixing all three of them together. Or the fourth option would be reverse osmosis. So on paper, before we're doing true testing, that was identified as, you know, this is Bill and I, this is the sixth PFAS treatment project. And PFAS just became the the big deal in water treatment here in the last couple of years. So this is the sixth pilot study he and I have worked on together. And you know, that that estimation of those technologies on a paper level was based on our experience at other plants and and industry, you know, treatment knowledge over the years. It wasn't proven, and so we want it, you know, an example would be there are some plants that would say the UV removes fifty percent, and there are some that will claim it'll remove eighty-five percent of the one for dioxane. And it's very much a case specific water chemistry question. What is the water in my plant going to do? So that's why we recommended screening level. We we use kind of a desktop level to narrow it down to those four options. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Ship?
Well, I was talking more about the treatment of PFAS in that if we were just looking in this case to treat PFAS, you wouldn't have necessarily included UV, finding that it's a benefit that was unexpected.
You could skip the U V A O P. It it would just mean you change out the G A C and or ion exchange more frequently, and hence have higher O N M costs.
You're you're absolutely right, though, that the the this new knowledge that UV oxidizes enough of the PFAS that in other compounds, it may not be oxidizing PFAS, it's likely oxidizing other items that are in the water. And by doing that, it leaves more of the absorption capacity of the GAC available for PFAS. But yeah, this, we're we're definitely speculating here. You know, this is new science. But it's a good thing. It what it means is it lowers your cost of operating it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, back where we were. So we've gotten to one for dioxane, how it's been non detect. We hope to get a detection. If necessary, we may have to do some spiking to prove that or or just show data from us. Uh, to prove that or or just show data from other pilots. So the preliminary conclusions are that the pilot study with multiple combinations is producing very good results. The media is lasting longer than anticipated. Some short-chain PFAS compounds are beginning to break through the media. And I did have an example of that with, right here, PFP E A is a short chain. So you can see it's already broken through uh three of the different trains and a fourth train is almost broken through. So extending the pilot operation time is needed to see the full breakthrough curves for most of the PFAS compounds. And the current best performing technologies are the UV AOP with GAC. UV AOP with GAC and ion exchange and reverse osmosis. So all three of those options uh give you broad range of protection. From uh the various things that we have brought up today, meaning. PFAS compounds, both short chain and long chain. Uh, 1,4 dioxane and your pharmaceuticals and personal care products and bromide and brominated compounds. So um, the best performing technologies for removal of the 1,4 dioxane, bromide and PPCTs. Uh, we have have not been able to demonstrate yet with the pilot testing because we don't have the data there. Um, but we have lots of data on the PFAS, just need a few more months. Reed, do you want to cover next step?
What, one question quick on the, on that, what is, what does EBCT mean? And are any of those, are any of the GACs here what we're currently using or is that a different technology?
Yeah, so EBCT is empty bed contact time. So in the pilot, we're testing, if you look at the. Larger clear columns, those are the ones with GAC. Note that the one in the middle seems to have a lot more of the black material in it. That's GAC. So that one in the middle has 20 minutes empty bed contact time. And all the others have 10 minutes empty bed contact time. It's just uh the amount of time that the water is in contact with the GAC.
Okay, and is one of, one of those what we're currently using in the plant or is that a different?
No, you do not have any of these full scale yet. What you currently have full scale is just adding powdered carbon at the front of the plant.
Okay.
Yeah, currently what what you have at the front of the plant is as water comes in, they mix a powdered. Carbon into a slurry of water and put it into the water before it's treated. And by the time the water gets two-thirds of the way through the treatment plant. It, that carbon is removed on the filters or or it's also removed in this, in in the basins in front of that. So you're kind of wasting it. So in the, in these columns, you're using the carbon for months and months and months. The way we're currently doing it, which is by necessity. You get, it's a one-pass use, you know, you throw it in and it's used, you're not getting the long-term ability. You're not getting things like biodegradation by the carbon and and there's, that's what we're saying. It's a short-term fix. You want to move to the long term.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so this is the last slide. So next steps. It's it's very hard for us to predict exactly what the data is going to do, but. Anywhere from, you know, maybe I should have said two to four months. We we just need a little more data. We need to let the pilot keep running is what we recommend in order to find out. How these breakthrough curves, particularly the four that are leading the F, you know, kind of winning together right now, we need separation. We need some of them to trail off and have breakthrough and some of them to last longer so we can identify which ones are going to be better for Pittsburgh. Um, so recommending that the pilot run a little longer, um, that more or less means running it into the fall. We were scoped to end this month, middle of August. So after that's done, we'll put together a final comparison and. Help, help the town with selecting a treatment goal and put all of that into a draft report with recommendations. To present back to the Board of Commissioners, obviously staff first and then the Board of Commissioners. And then um, once a decision is made, you know, then it's, uh, I didn't put on here, but you know, finding fun. You know, deciding how the project's funded, whether it's applications for low-interest loans. And oftentimes that can be done in parallel to design uh or before design. And so that, Bill, you can go to the last slide. So that's, that's the update that we uh put together for the board. And we're happy to answer questions. You know, happy to do a workshop on this, happy to. After the pilot's done, do a workshop, whatever is, would you guys, that you would feel is most appropriate and helpful.
Reed and Bill, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We we do have a question here from Jessica. She says, what screening criteria will be used to set the treatment goal?
That's a great question. I think that's a policy question more than a science question, uh, rather than engineering question. And um, I think this board probably needs. We need to really focus on that and and probably have some presentations from scientists and engineers to help us. Have the information we need to approach that, but that that's just my own, need your thoughts. But I think it's a great question. I should let Reed Barton and Bill Dowbiggen take a stab at it, though.
Well, one of the things that, um, you know, I I've been thinking about, how do we establish, you know, which train we want to use? Once we understand, you know, which is, what level of success we're having. Is these things are unregulated, but I think there are some guidelines. And I think we should be eminently familiar with what those guidelines are. So without better information from a regulatory perspective, those are probably our targets.
So the. The EPA uh has struggled. With drinking water regulations. I think I'm being objective and fair in saying that. They have struggled to make new regulations over the last 20-plus years. There is a lot of. Uh, criteria that have to be met in order to create a new regulation. An example of that is they just announced, I believe it was this year, that. After looking at perchlorate, which is basically a component of rocket fuel. Um, that they decided not to regulate it in drinking water. And and it's really the devil's in the details. It's a, it's a, it's a technicality. They they acknowledged that it was uh bad for humans. They acknowledged it shouldn't be in water. But they said that making a regulation would, um, it wouldn't benefit enough utilities. That perchlorate's only found in three or four percent of the utilities in the country. So there wasn't enough benefit for, you know, so my my point is to paint a picture. It's very difficult to get, to get a new regulation. So with the, with something that moves very fast, like private industry, the chemical industry. Dow, DuPont, Chemours, 3M, they move very quickly in their advancements in science. And the regulation is decades behind them in identifying which chemicals are harmful, what level of them is. Would be harmful to humans. So it's, it's a very, you won't find definitive. My point, Commissioner Fiocco, is that the literature will not support a definitive answer of, I need to test to this level for this. For 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 most of these chemicals. The only, there are two of of the thousands of PFAS compounds and and I believe, Bill, I don't know if you have the head, your top of your head. How many have been identified in the Hall River, 15 to 20? But those, we're only able to test for 50, about 50 of them right now. And and I think about 20 of those-ish, I'm I'm not looking at the data right now, but 15 to 20 of those have shown up. Uh, and there's two of them that have these health guidelines that you were mentioning. And and that's good. We have health guidelines for two of them, but for the vast majority of them, or looking at PFAS as a total class. Total PFAS in the water, there's no guidelines for that. It's a challenging question.
Yeah, and I I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Bonnet. It is a a policy question, but we have a lot of information from other projects, other locations. Uh, where we can help you in a workshop format to go through. It it's very detailed stuff.
An example of a, of a, uh, recently another utility, I'm I'm just by contract, I can't mention who they are. But another utility that's dealing with similar problem, they identified their goal as best available treatment technology. So it's just, we're gonna, we're gonna do the best treatment we can do. And that's not necessarily one. The way EPA defines that is usually there's one or two treatments that do, technologies that do the best. I think you could lean on the pilot study and say, it's clear two or three of these options are best available treatment technology. And we'll, we'd be good, we'd meet our goal with any one of these. What's another example, Bill? Brunswick County on the coast adopted the, the target of 90. 90% removal of all target contaminants was their stated goal. Um, they didn't state the goal until after we had the pilot study done and they confirmed they had a treatment technology that could achieve that. Wilmington did, made a goal, uh, they picked five PFAS compounds and they said the total of these five. Has to stay below um 140 nanograms per liter. So they, theirs was more quantitative. And it's a little complicated how they came up with that. I think they worked with uh NC, some, some folks at NC State. To come up with some logic of how that number was established, but it's almost always a judgment call.
This has been very helpful for me and I'm not surprised that more time was, is needed and you're recommending that. Early on, I was thinking that we should do that anyway because of the seasonal variation that's been observed in some of the. Sampling in the river. Uh, we know that it's higher at sometimes the year than another. So I'm I'm strongly in support of your continued efforts. I'm looking forward to. Hearing more in three to four months when you see, when you have more data about the breakthrough of the contaminants. Um, I think you'll have much better uh, uh, costs. Cost estimates at that point. Are there other questions from the board?
Well, I would encourage the board to think about as, uh, with the extension of time to think about. At some point, the wisdom of perhaps uh. Having a workshop where we spend a rather extended period of time looking at not only the data coming from the. From the test, but the uh. Learn, what's been learned from other places around this country. And how we can uh best go about this process of of setting what our goal ought to be. So just kind of keep asking that, keep that in the back of our minds as we go forward. Because I think that will take some real serious time and attention that probably isn't necessarily best done. In the middle of a regular board meeting.
Mayor Noss, that's an excellent suggestion. Um, Mr. Barton, Mr. Dowbiggen, can, can a workshop be included under the current contract?
It it certainly can. We have, uh, we have um allowance funds that have not been allocated. Um, and and in fact, I was, I I don't know if it, I I wouldn't think it required board approval. But we were going to request at the staff level that some of that money be allocated to fund the pilot going on some number of more months. Uh, but I I believe there's ample money in that allowance to cover preparing, you know, us preparing for a workshop. That that we could uh, you know, guide, moderate and and help walk through the issues and and certainly help with that effort.
Are there other commissioners interested in taking a more careful look at? Uh, the accumulation of information from other places that that might guide us in setting criteria levels?
I'd be interested, yes, absolutely. But I I do recall, uh, Bill mentioning early on in the, the, the project. That it was very hard to correlate water chemistry from one location to another. Because they seem to be quite individual. Or specific to a particular area. So. Um, I don't know if that, you know, impacts what we can learn or glean from other. Other regions and areas.
Well, well, one, maybe, I think you're correct that we, we, it would be a more fruitful workshop if we got a little more data. Um, first. But I think that's what you're saying, Commissioner Fiocco, is is to not try to extrapolate. But but to use the balance of data that you guys are funding right now. So what we could do is say the plan, and maybe this is a proposal, is that the plan is to have a workshop. To to go through this information, including. Setting goals. Uh, preliminary costs, so in before a report is prepared, but when enough data is. And all the pieces are available to make conclusions, maybe get together and talk through them. Uh, is um, in a workshop setting.
Reed, would that be appropriate to do before or after the comparison of the alternatives?
I I missed the beginning of that, Chris.
Before the, um, when you want to set up the workshop, if we go that route, would it be appropriate to do that? After you finalize the alternatives to discuss cost of each and and maybe the particulars of such after you have the data collected? Or would you go before that?
No, I I think it would be important for us to have. Uh, not that there might not be some honing or some final tweaking after the workshop. But I think having the broad brush strokes of cost and performance in hand. And then having a workshop will help that workshop cover all the bases or or cover all the decisions that are. That we need town leadership to weigh in on. You know, at at the end of the day, PFAS is. A polarizing topic from town to town because some towns are the dischargers of it and some, some towns are the. Unwilling recipients of it. Uh, and it, no matter what you guys do, there's going to be. Somebody upstream or downstream that is unhappy about it. Um, and so the more you feel that you knew all the facts and made a decision eyes wide open about what is best for Pittsburgh. I think is really important.
If I get that correctly, Reed, I I think for the board's sake, I'm kind of borrowing from your. Uh, penultimate slide of the kind of the next steps. Um, I think it would be uh to allow Reed and Bill to look at this further. Um, finalize, um, or at least uh more heavily discuss the treatment alternatives. Have the workshop and then utilizing uh both uh perhaps a more informed board. Understanding the alternatives, costs, et cetera, uh, then that would assist Bill and Reed in going towards. Um, the draft report with the recommendations.
Yeah. That that sounds good. Uh, Bill, can you back up the slides? One slide, I think, is what, uh, what Chris is saying. So there's the second bullet says finalize the comparison treatment alternatives. I think right after that, we'd say have a, have a workshop. So in between the second and third bullets, big, big bullets, far left bullets. Before we write a report, but we have the data in hand, let's get together and have a thorough discussion about what it means.
And does that include some of the broad brush cost implications?
Yes, so when, when we have performance data in hand, we'll be able to generate not only. Uh, I mean, they're they're preliminary costs, but a capital cost, what does it take to construct it? And then a operating cost, what does it take yearly to operate it to achieve the performance level that you saw in the pilot?
Because I think ultimately, it's a real easy question if the money's not an issue. Zero, get to zero, right? So the hard part is. Is balancing, that's the hard part.
Every option is going to have a different price tag. And while it only, it may only be a 30, 20 to 30% swing in cost. Or maybe it's a 50% swing in cost from the worst to the best. That that margin is in the millions, you know, it's, it's uh, they, they will be sizable numbers in between the options.
And I guess part of the the conversation is scalability. And I guess part of the conversation is scalability because it's not just quality, it's quantity, right?
That's right. You have a pretty small site for the current plant. Some of these options will allow you to expand that site to four MGD. Some of these options may allow you to expand that site eventually to six MGB, getting more out of that site. So yeah, there's other, other issues in play. Ultimately, you know, the long range plan is that there's a Jordan Lake Regional Partnership that's together. And in, in the next decade, in the twenty, actually, I believe they're going to move forward sooner with design. But you know, let's say 10 years from now and on, they're going to be, there's going to be that new plant that Pittsburgh is planning to be a part owner of. And I believe your allocation from that plant off the top of my head is
Six.
Six, okay, I was going to say eight, six MGD. You know, and that this plant that we're talking about going to either four or six MGD and that plant having a six MG allegation for Pittsburgh will carry you guys 20 plus years into the future. You know, possibly depending on how fast Chatham Park develops, even maybe even much farther than that. So you, you have the resources, you have, you know, some towns are limited, they just don't have the water and they have to buy it from others and they're limited. You know, they're, using example, a lot of the towns north of Raleigh are really water constrained and they, there's a lot of politics and more or less you know, fighting over water. And you guys are very fortunate not to have that problem. We have a water quality issue, but we have the means to fix the quantity issues and the means to fix the quality issue and can make it a, a really positive story for the town.
Reed, this might be a comeback item or something you could speak to, but the, the one graph was provided in nanograms per liter. And I believe that was the current treatment with the powder activated carbon. What, what did these other, I mean, I know it's a ratio of concentrations, but what are we talking about in terms of nanograms per liter output from some of these pilot trains?
Yes, so the total PFAS coming out here, what I'm showing on the screen, this shows you that you have about 200 remaining after your conventional treatment because the powder carbon was removing it down from, you know, around 400 down to about 200. So that's what's going in. So at this point, the inlet, so one is basically equivalent to 200. So as you get up to say point five, that's about 100.
Yeah, Bill, let me, let me just point out to Commissionership, we do not, even, even though it would be interesting, we are not turning the current powder activated carbon system off while we're running the pilot. So where that runs, so we get that 40 to 60% reduction before the water hits our pilot plant, our pilot equipment. Is that part of what you're asking?
Well, it is now, in, in that that is not intended to continue, right? So we, we would be getting a higher load of
You would.
Into the, the eventual final plants and we're not sure about the effect on, on that as a part of this study.
Well, we're going to have to extrapolate that, but we feel better about extrapolating it with your own data than extrapolating it with data from Fayetteville or another town, you know.
Or about turning it off.
Yeah, you sure don't want to turn it off because then you'd be actually drinking the 400 nanogram.
Right.
Okay, so, so generally we're, we could do the kind of ratio calculation. And if there was a point that we said we want to be under 70, then we could either decide which technology does that or what the filter change interval is to remain under a particular concentration.
Yeah, I will, I will point out 70 is the limit, the, the recommended guideline for PFOS and PFOA together. So two of these legacy compounds that really aren't very much in use in production anymore. They were phased out of industry 20 years ago because everybody knew they were toxic back then. And it, you know, we still don't have a regulation for them, but we have a guideline. So you could target that, but there are treatment technologies that we're testing here that do really good at those, but don't do as well at what we call, those are, those are what a class that we call long chain PFAS. And particularly carbon by itself is, if, if you were only targeting PFOS and PFOA by itself, carbon all by itself would show you as the, would show to be the cheapest solution. The problem is, is it's not going to have as good a performance on the short chain PFAS compounds. But I may have overcomplicated that, but PFOS, PFOA, kind of these, everybody's heard of them and they're the, the long chain ones. But what's, if you only, if you make that your only goal, my, my guiding, my guiding goal is 70 parts per trillion of PFOS, PFOA, you will probably end up selecting GAC by itself. And it's likely that us, you know, like we're seeing in the graph that's up here, a substantial portion, maybe it's 50% of the short chains are going to pass through.
Okay.
This shows an example of that. The first thing that passed, that broke through was PFPEA, which is a short chain. And it broke through in just a couple of months, the orange line with 10 minutes empty bed contact time.
And that's
A smaller amount.
And that's the kind of benefit that, that a workshop conversation would offer is we can, we can kind of walk through all the options for treatment goals and kind of, I don't know what the, I think it's called straw man, kind of pick at it. And, and you know, try to identify what's the weakness of this goal? Does it leave us exposed to a risk anyway? Are we comfortable with the risks? Is it better than this goal and the risks that this goal present?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Reed and Bill? Okay. Well, Reed and Bill, thank you so much for the presentation tonight and for the work you've been doing with us. And we look forward to getting back together with you in the next while. So thank you again very much.
Okay, great.
Thank you, man.
Just, thank you. One question, I know there was some effort to get a community flyer or a community letter sent out. Did that go out about PFAS?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
It's on the website.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, well, we'll be back in a couple of months and, and it sounds like we'll work with, with Chris to coordinate a workshop as the data's, when we see the writing on the wall that the data is coming available and we're, we're getting our ducks in a row, we'll reach out to Chris about setting up that, that type of meeting.
Thank you very much, guys. Pretty appreciate it.
Okay. Good night.
Good night. Next up, Waste Industries Extension, Bob?
Yes. Yes. What we're asking here is for the board to authorize us to extend our current solid waste contract for two years to June 30th, 2022. And it includes 3.6% adjustment in the current rate.
Any questions for Bob, comments?
Can you clarify the term of that, Bob?
You mean the timeframe?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be for two years, which would serve us through June 30th, two, 2022.
Okay, the amendment that we have in our packet says 2021, but the memo says 2022.
Yeah, it's a two, it's a two-year extension.
Okay, so we just need to modify that.
Yeah.
My, my only request is that Mr. Morgan or Mr. Kennedy, if you could please elevate to the company the importance of proper maintenance of their vehicles. There's one truck that's been on the route that, you know, I'm not a diesel mechanic, but I'm pretty certain that it's got a bad cylinder. It sounds like steam engine. And so it'd be great if they would tend to that so that we didn't have that extra pollution in our town.
I'll start with that, Mr. Bonnetts. I'll contact our POC with Waste Industries and, and ask them to seek a remedy if they so can.
Any, any other questions for Bob?
No, just an observation that I see we've already included this in our budget for this fiscal year, so.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, great, thanks. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, motion carries. Want to, New Business, which is the Mosaic Lots Phase Two Final Plat and planning is up.
Hi, Mayor Nass, this is Kaylee Mueller. Presenting again. Okay, can everybody see? Okay. Okay, so the final plat for Phase Two Lot Two of the Mosaic Area A subdivision was submitted for review. The site planned for an apartment building on Lot Two was approved on June 8th. The Mosaic Area A, Area A subdivision was approved back in August 2018. The final plat for Phase One A of the Mosaic Area A subdivision was approved in February 2020 and created 14 mixed use lots. The Phase Two Lot Two Final Plat creates one new multifamily lot with no new right of way. To date, sewer has not been allocated for this use. The plat has been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinances by the appropriate departments. At the August 3rd Planning Board Meeting, the board recommended approval of the final plat. Staff also recommends approval of the final plat. Please note the applicant is present to provide comment and answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Stop sign in Chatham Forest. Chief?
Okay, Mayor Commissioners, bringing to you a stop sign request from the HLA of Chatham Forest. Prior to me taking interim chief, which was not 2020, the homeowners association had spoke to Chief Crutchfield and to other staff members about installing new stop signs inside of Chatham Forest. They included, just to give you a little history, back on January the 27th, I believe this was brought up in a board meeting and Commissioner Fioco at the time had asked for, which Randy Boyer had, was speaking on behalf of Chatham Forest, had asked for a map to show where the stop signs would be placed. And a stop sign map was provided to, I'm assuming Mr. Gruesbeck, like I said, I'm coming in on the tail end of this, was provided to Mr. Gruesbeck and to Chief Crutchfield. The, I was contacted by Candace Hunziker, which is the president of the HLA in Chatham Forest. After I took over as interim chief, as far as moving forward with the stop sign request, at the time, we were going through the traffic common policy, trying to develop it. I told her that we may need to wait until that traffic common policy was in place. So after it was put into place in June of 2020, this has been going on, this, I guess the stop sign request and Commissioner Bonnetts, Mr. Boyer, and Miss Hunziker may be able to speak to this more than I can. This has been going on for two or three years as far as them trying to get stop signs or, you know, get some kind of relief there in Chatham Forest. So they had, Miss Hunziker had brought to me, since they had already requested this prior to our traffic common policy, could it be, could the stop signs be put, be placed into, into effect? I told her that I could bring it to the town board and see what the town board's suggestions or what their, what their thoughts on the process were instead of going through the traffic common policy that we have in place now. So with that, I can, if Miss Hunziker or Mr. Boyer, if anyone else wants to speak to it or have questions or whatever you want to do, Mayor.
Yes, I know that both those residents had indicated desire to speak. So if either are still present and around and want to talk about this whole issue, now would be the time.
Mr. Mayor, I'm still here. Our president, Candace Hunziker, did not have the intestinal fortitude to get to this point of the evening. And she has to get up early to work and said she literally had to go to bed.
Yes.
She asked that I remain on the call, which I have done. It is true what Chief Johnson has said. For the past few years, the board, previous to me going back on the board here in Chatham Forest, has supported this idea of stop signs and reached out to the town to manage Gruesbeck. And then I, of course, came and spoke to this board a while back and was advised that we bring a map, which has been presented and so forth and so on. So multiple HOA boards have supported the notion of installing some stop signs. The other issue that was at play was we used to have a 20 mile an hour speed limit, which didn't conform with the town. So that's all been swapped out and now it does, the signs are 25. So I guess the hope is that we could get some approval for some signs and the HOA, of course, would agree to pay for whatever the cost was beyond just a standard issued DOT sign. If, if we're going to put in more decorative posts or whatever, the HOA would pick up that cost. I read all of the email communication that was sent to Candace, she forwarded to me, where Commissionership weighed in and he drove through the neighborhood and Commissioner Bonnetts weighed in and our new town manager, Mr. Kennedy weighed in. So one question I guess I would have is that Mr. Kennedy brought up the notion of maybe there were some plant matter in the right of way that could be conflicting with the site triangles. I mean, that was at least something I read there and maybe I'm incorrect.
That, that was my comment there as I drove through, there was, there's quite a few actually stop signs that are covered by the, the trees. And I don't think they're necessarily in location, or there may not be in locations that are affecting this. But I think just in, in general, I didn't even know whose responsibility it was in this case to, to clear that. But there's, there's definitely some that need to be cleared so they're more visible. So people know there is a stop sign there.
This does open up a question now that, for the board on this. So our covenants are written that the town right of way, which is you, you know, it's all your right of way. Our roads are only 27 feet back to back. So that leaves 11 and a half feet on both sides that belong to the town. But generally, the But generally, the residents mow it and maintain it, et cetera, and it's like that in Powell Place or Potterstone Village or anywhere else you have these kind of right of ways. Our covenants refer to the town right of way as common area, so I've been telling our, our HOA board that legally, we can actually do things in there to help the town or maybe even have an agreement with the town that you might want us to do some maintenance and then work with John Petee, I don't know. It just would seem that in some of these small projects, maybe there could be an MOU. Like what you're referring to, have our landscape people cut that down, you know, trim those bushes so that you're not having to spend money or because legally we can do it, it's just not our property, but the way the covenants were written, it is considered common area. Well, that's just a side note.
And with that, you could just simply set up an encroachment agreement. Those are pretty common with any type of work to be conducted, either temporarily or permanently within a, within your right of way. You know, municipalities have it with DOT, HOAs and POAs have it with municipalities and DOT. So that's just basically an encroachment agreement that could be set up. That would allow basically landscapers to encroach within the public right of way to maintain accordingly. And then functionally, there's usually a hold harmless on the back end for the town. That if they need to go in to do any work, anything installed within that right of way that the HOA installed, you know, generally can be quote unquote destroyed without having to be repaired. Most of them, people are good neighbors and they want to get it back to closest they can get, but that's not an uncommon thing to have in place.
Knowing the, years ago in Potterstone, there was that issue or stop signs and I know that there was some issue with some, trying to figure out the definition of a legal stop sign versus a non-legal one and having to do with enforcement and what could be done. And as I remember, there were at least three or four of the stop signs were deemed to be illegal and non-enforceable in terms of if people decided they didn't want to stop there. And I don't know if that's still the situation or the case or would be the case as far as these are concerned or not.
Well, I think as long as they are, they're duly erected by the town or by DOT, if it was a state road, that would be enforceable as far as, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
So, and I know there's been Commissioner Ship sent, sent an email out to the some about, you know, using stop signs as a speed reducer. Like I say, I, Commissioner Ship, I looked at those same, some of those same studies you looked at. And I, you know, that's, like I do, you know, I have reservations, some reservations about that, but to the best of my knowledge, like I say, when I referenced West Salisbury Street. I believe, and like I say, I may be wrong about this, you know, as I get older, I can't remember everything as good as used to. But I'm thinking that there used to be a, pretty much a straight shot all the way from Highway eighty seven to right at Saint Bart's, right in there and so stop signs could, you know, has worked there as far as slowing traffic down because I assume that's why they were put there. But then you run into the, to the fact of, well, will people start, you know, running the stop signs and is that going to create another problem as far as us and enforcing? So I do realize that, that issue too.
Perhaps we could compromise and put this, try the signs over by Hawk Spiral and where Commissioner Bonnet's lives, by Fox Chapel and the other two, the ones that were requested down by Cynthia Lane or Meredith Wade. Because I think the real egregious issue is that apparently people come, I mean, there's a lot of elevation change and they're coming in and coming down Fox Sp- Fox Chapel or the other road, Hawk Spiral at speed. And if we had a stop sign there, it might get people in the habit of making that stop, Chief Johnson, and then we could just monitor it as it just goes down the road. I personally, I'm in the minority here, but I actually like the fact that we have either the town did it or we did it, put up that sign down there that tells you what your speed is. I actually personally feel that that does a good job of deterrence. But I do think that these signs, the one near Commissioner Bonnet's house and the other one that she wanted would probably as a compromise be a good start and then if there's no other problems, we don't need to come back.
So Randy, when, when you're saying coming down Fox Chapel, coming downhill there, that is one of the ones that Shorty had mentioned and, and I did that there is a stop sign there, coming down Fox Chapel to Chatham Forest Drive. It is mostly occluded by the, the tree there, but there is an existing stop sign in that.
She wants to put another stop sign across the way to, so that people coming down Chatham Forest stop and create like a two or three way stop. I think that's what she's wanting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do, I mean, I apologize kind of in, in general for things that I couldn't control, but that this has taken a couple of years to come to a point. I do remember you coming to the board in, in January, bringing this up where we asked for the map. This is for me, one of the things where I started looking at it, the more I looked at it, the more there was to look at in that there was multiple things, I guess, on the map provided that were not, didn't represent the current conditions and so part of, part of those emails are getting clarity on that. Does anybody know who put up that electronic radar sign? I know we talked about it specifically a meeting or two ago. Did, did the town put that sign up?
I've been told that it was staff and that it came from the Public Works Department.
Mr. Petee.
And I've also been told that it's temporary, so that we should not count on it remaining there. But it's been a great, great help. I firmly believe that it has, you know, there's a few odd people, according to Candace, who take it as a threat or a challenge to, to exceed the speed and they want to see how fast they can exceed the speed, but no, I think most people are appreciative of the reminder, especially coming down the hill of Chatham Forest Drive.
And, and I'll say in general too, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, don't really want to play one and I'm thankful we have a traffic calming policy now. So this one being outside of that policy, it just brings up some, some additional questions. But I, I don't have a huge preference on how many stop signs are in Chatham Forest, so.
Commissioner Ship, I asked our board, the HOA, to see what the price of purchasing one of those signs was, because the town has been so generous to put there as a deterrent, because I personally thought that it was effective and perhaps could be moved around. Which is why I would just ask if we could move forward on just, on the two that she wants and then later we may not have to mess with those. But I know that the two, the one that she wants across on Chatham Forest and Fox Chapel to make a three way intersection. She feels, and I have to defer to Candace, she spends a lot of time walking around the neighborhood and talking to neighbors, much more than me, but she feels real strongly about those two and has probably talked to Commissioner Bonnet's about it.
Yes. So, so the idea there is that it would be a three way stop on Chatham Forest Drive and the intersection of Chatham Forest Drive and the Fox Chapel Lane. There is one stop sign there currently. The request is to have one for the downhill folks and one for the uphill folks to pause. And she conveyed to me the desire for prioritizing that and Cynthia Lane because of so much of the traffic coming from Fire Tower Road and the east side of town, cutting through our neighborhood.
Okay, so we just.
Commissioner Ship sent the, sent the email and I went back and looked at the map. I do agree that if we, if y'all did, if y'all did decide to put the stop signs there at Meredith Court and at Cynthia Lane, that may cause an issue as far as if somebody's at Cynthia Lane, they're going to turn left into their driveway, which is before Meredith Court, then like I say, if somebody's coming down Chatham Forest towards Thompson, that may cause an issue. I would, my recommendation would be to put that one there at Cynthia Lane, because like I say, that's going into the development or into the neighborhood. Thus, you know, slowing traffic down coming off Thompson Street.
Thank, thank you, Chief Johnson. That, that was the other thing that she conveyed to me is that if we, if we, if the board was reluctant to do the full compliment that is in this nice ordinance, thank you for preparing it. We could strike through Meredith Court, that one, just not add that one, but the, the Cynthia Lane and the Fox Chapel Lane intersecting with Chatham Forest Drive were the top priorities.
And so we just need a motion to approve that. So I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Big part. Oh, you already did it. Good.
A second?
The, the, the ordinance has three intersections. Are you deleting one of them? Are you deleting the number two?
They said they wanted the Cynthia Lane and the ones over at Fox Chapel. And.
So the motion, motion would be to approve the ordinance for number one and number three.
Yeah. From what Mr. Bonnet said and Chief Johnson, yeah.
And Chief Johnson.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Very good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Quick, your ship.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyer, Chief Johnson, Commissioner Baldwin, thank you. Thank you, board.
Does relate, does seem to me that the board ought to think at some point in time whether this issue, this, this kind of issue should come to this board or be handled by the town manager. Hold on a second.
I agree. I think the traffic calming policy covers this now.
Yes.
We don't have a view on stop signs.
I agree.
And the H, and to the, to the defense of the HOA, they did make repeated efforts to work through the manager previously.
Yes, I know. Yeah, it's been going on a long time. Certainly has.
Stop signs are, stop signs need to be adopted by the board.
Okay.
Individually?
Yes.
Is there a legal requirement for that?
You're going to arrest people for violating it, you better have a law to back it up. That was the trouble with Potterstone. You don't have any ordinances to back up those signs that the HOA put up willy nilly.
Well.
So if, if, if the chief is going to arrest somebody for violating a stop sign.
Well, if the board don't need the authority, if the board delegates the authority of the Public Works Department and the Police Department to put stop signs where they think it's most appropriate to do so, I believe that that would allow them to do that and then enforce it.
I, I would disagree.
Okay.
But.
Seems ridiculous to use more time to decide to put a stop sign at the corner of Fifth and Main.
It's not the stop sign, it's the stopping of the traffic. That is the issue.
That's the purpose of it.
To give notice, to give notice to the public who's driving down the road, that they need to stop or else they'll get a ticket.
I have never met a single person in my whole life that didn't know what a stop sign meant. But maybe I've been sheltered. All right.
I've, I've on occasion mistaken the intent.
I'm sorry?
I've on occasion mistaken the intent of that sign.
Well, yes, possible.
Slow, not stop.
Okay, all right. New, new business is.
Board directives, updates on what.
Directives, updates, Bob Morgan, okay?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have prepared an update on seven projects and I have gotten some additional information about two of those. Number five, the Robeson Creek Outfall Hydraulic Model. The engineer has been building the model using the data that they have obtained. They recently requested additional background information to complete that model. And so the staff has to get that together for them and then they'll begin running the model to complete the study. And then on number seven, the RFQs were due on August the third and they only received one RFQ. And so they were re-advertised and for August the twenty first and hoping that we'll get some more proposals or, excuse me, RFQs and, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about the other projects if there are any.
Bob, can, can you say the date again that the RFQ has been re-advertised for response?
August twenty first.
Okay, thank you. Who's the engineer doing the Robeson Creek Outfall Hydraulic Model?
Hmm, let me see if I can find. Dickinson.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for Bob on this?
Only that, so I'm seeing that number six is not really started, but it's one of those things I think is a critical path for the town when we're talking about our, our sewer issues. One of the reasons we've got this sewer issue and you've heard me say it over and over again is our I and I.
I agree with you and that was just put in the current year budget, so it's a, a new project.
I know, and, and just, I know how quickly a fiscal year will go. You know, we're already a month in, so we've, we've used eight percent of our year.
Yeah, I think Chris can handle that.
I don't think I have a choice, Bob.
I think Bob's looking for the end of a Zoom call.
Break in and out very shortly.
All right. There are no more questions?
Bob, I'm just a little concerned about the Burn Hill Road and all like that, that water line that we have been involved with for numerous years. I understand there's some problem with some easements or relocation of water means, have we contacted the homeowners and all?
No, and, and that's why I really didn't touch this one. I think this is going to take probably another six months of work because a lot of work needs to be done with the neighborhood. And I didn't want to start with one administration and have to continue with the second one. So I didn't, I didn't work on this one, but you got some policy issues there. There are quite a few of the meters that aren't, are located on private property and they're going to have to be moved on to the right of way. Typically that is paid by the homeowner to do that. And I understand that this neighborhood is low to moderate type of neighborhood. Also, there's some mandatory policies that if you don't have water and we run the water past you, you have to connect. Do you want to enforce that, that policy? And then in order to extend the utility all the way down the road, other twelve pieces of property that don't have easements. And you hope we could get those at no cost to provide the water, so those are sort of the policy issues that have to be addressed. And then a community meeting needs to be conducted to, to bring the neighborhood up to up to par on what the project is after the board discusses some of the policy issues.
Okay, maybe possibly when we have a little more staff, we can get involved in this because it has been an ongoing process for a while.
Yes, sir. A couple of years, I understand it.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell and the rest of the board is there, to your point, Mr. Farrell, is there a, a board desire with some of those policy issues, at least initially? That, that I can at least inform me to help navigate maybe some of this process. In, in terms of like relocating the meters and mandatory connections and it's one thing to say, yeah, we'd like to do this and then a charge to me is either to navigate that or find you a legal path forward to do such a thing if you so desire. If that makes sense.
Yes, sir. I just know that we've had some problems with some bad water over there for years and we started some action on this a while back and. We started some action on this a while back and. And I, I don't really understand if I know that. Condemning whales, is that, if, if that's a mandatory policy.
It currently is a mandatory policy, but it's certainly a policy that could be changed from the tank. And I think Chris had some ideas on that. We talked about it a little bit today.
Okay. I mean, I, I think maybe I know several that nape was up in that. I could speak to a few, but I don't know that everybody is. Willing to get off of their whale to get on to pay for city water.
Yeah. I fully understand that.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this for Bob or Chris? Okay. Commissioner Concerns. Commissioner Farrell.
Uh, nothing at this time. Welcome, Chris here. Good, good to see you.
Good to see y'all.
Commissioner Ship?
Yeah. Short list for this evening. Citizens Matters, I don't think we've had anybody utilize that during the pandemic. Uh, we almost had it today, but it was. Turned out not to be, so I just think that we, we might need to think about how we're doing that. We used to have. Decent participation, a couple of people in meeting come talk. And I think that's really important. And just maybe advertising how, how people can do that in these Zoom meetings.
But I think that's a great idea, Co.
And, and I think also there has been the, the prohibition in the past about talking about agenda items and I don't think that we. Can actually do that or should do that, so we might want to advertise that as. Part of it as well, that if you want to speak about agenda items, we would. Uh, be open to that. I think this is a discussion I had before with Mr. Messick about if we're allowed to prohibit. And I don't think we are based on content, but.
Well, in the course of the. Years that I've observed. It seems to me that the board have been, came consistent over that time and sometimes wanting to adhere to that. Not speaking and then other times saying, I'll go ahead and talk about. Even though it is an agenda item and. I, I tend to agree with you, Commissioner Ship. We certainly ought to be consistent with it.
Do it now, but we, we should clarify what we're allowed to do and what we want to do in regards to that, but overall encourage. Citizen input any way that it can.
Mr. Ship, how many members of the board are you talking about having? A conversation together at one time?
Uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm talking about every meeting we have a citizens' concerns section. Um, and generally citizens would come sign up to speak at the meeting, but. They haven't done that since we've been on Zoom meetings.
Yeah, and the, the issue is that the policy of the. Board had been that you during citizen matters when they sign up to. And are not allowed to speak on items that are on that agenda for that meeting. They're generally allowed to speak about anything else that might come across their mind. And that in the past has probably been. Not enforced that idea very much, but I think if I. Get Commissioner Ship's. Drift, I think. Making it more widely known, particularly during this pandemic, that we are in fact. Desirous of having. Citizen concerns. And that perhaps we ought to rethink what our policy has been concerning the agenda items.
Cause, I mean, for example, if someone came tonight and said they want to talk about water quality, according to our current. Policy or ordinance, we could tell them not allowed to talk about it because we're going to talk about it in the meeting. Uh, which, honestly, I don't think it's legal, but we can. That's, that's something for you to look into, Chris.
Yeah, and, and the board has, the board has. Over the last few years, the board has abandoned that more often than they've not usually. I, I've been to meeting after meeting where the mayor said should be enforced and they say, no, go ahead, let him speak.
Right, agreed.
Yeah, and I, I think there's, there's obviously a multiple ways you could do that and you can. Even just have like your, I mean, your standard monthly public comment period. Where the board shouldn't necessarily be. You don't have to comment back.
Right.
Someone can certainly share their comment. You can, you can set a policy for time limits or anything you so choose. In, in my opinion, but just know that you don't always have to have a rebuttal. You can just say, thank you for your concern, we'll look into that. Um, and that's, that's an equal advantage to them to get, to get it off their chest and that way it gets in the public forum and we can't address it. So you don't have to be put on the spot.
Yes, absolutely. On the, this is kind of a website comment, but it's really about the. Press release on the town water. Um, I, I didn't realize that went out and it was partially because I had a child in the meantime. And I know it was sent out for feedback and I, I didn't get my feedback in. But um, I, I don't think it's realistic to expect that posting something on the website is, is getting it to the public and so. Um, and I realized this talks about, you know, attending the meeting tonight for an update. So I, I guess what I would. Recommend or, or ask is that maybe Chris sort of rewrites that letter. With some of the results from the meeting, we put it out, back out with the water bills like we did previously. In that sort of unsigned letter to give, to give an update that is signed. From the town because I, I, I mean, it's, it's obviously difficult to find on the website. And I, I just don't think people are going to the website looking for new PDF links. Uh, to see what the latest information is.
I'm not. I think that's a great suggestion, Commissioner Ship. And yeah, Mr. Kennedy, if you're willing to do that, I think it'd be a very important communication included in the water bill and maybe we could also post it to the Facebook page.
To the board, I did share. With the Water Quality Task Force and anybody who sent me an email about concerns about the water, I sent them a copy.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Appreciate that. I, I think that the fact is we have some, I think promising updates from, that we got from CDM Smith tonight and.
Yes.
Highlighted as well, so. And in, in regards to the Water Quality Task Force, do. Do we get a commitment from them of getting a report by next meeting? Or I, I didn't, I don't think anyone. From them was on this evening for the update.
We have a, we have a. Presentation by the Water Quality Task Force at the August 24th meeting and we're being joined by. The director and former director, retired director of the. Environmental. Quality.
NIH.
NIH, yeah, a person that is going to talk to us about. That I tend to have that on the agenda for the 24th.
Okay, excellent. I want to make sure we close the loop on that. One, one of the things I, I realized when I was reviewing the May 26th. Minutes is they said that the state had funded some BFAST testing and the results should be out in June. As a part of our water quality update then, and I didn't know if those results out and, and obviously many other things that we're looking for from the task force, so. I'm glad to hear that and that's all I had.
Okay. Commissioner Fiocco, anything?
Uh, yeah, and, and just with that topic of the update, I wonder if it makes sense to invite Reed Barton to. Hear the presentation on the 24th.
Certainly.
Knowledgeable of, you know, our testing right now. Might be a good conversation.
I, I would. He did, I could invite him or, or, or Chris, you can, either one, but. I think, I think Reed should definitely. That's a good idea, Commissioner Fiocco. Thank you.
Chris, one thing that I have felt or, or found to be exceptionally helpful on. My work on the board is to have this budget binder that we've had put together for, I don't know, the last four or five years. It's a big binder of the budget. And I'll be happy to show you the copy that I have, give you a clue. But Heather probably knows it inside and out and it's really great. We get a monthly update on the figures, a place to file it. And, you know, it helps, helps me certainly keep track of some things.
Heather's getting that put together.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, she, she's working on it.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm, I'm. I saw the I and I on the update today and it was one of my issues. I just can't stress enough how. Valuable that work is. So I'd like to see us really pursue that. The other thing we, we had during the budget discussion was the. There were, the realization that we were generating far more water than we had previously and that. We weren't necessarily seeing it in a revenue stream. Pardon the pun, but. And there was talk about doing a water loss study. And I wanted to keep our eye on that and, and i- if we're doing anything with it, is there an update on that? Have we?
Heather's was to send out a link to you, to the board. That is part of a report that's given to the state and it had five years of history of, of water lost.
Okay.
And. We talked about it, my assumption is that she sent it out, but. Chris can check with her tomorrow and, and see if she's done that.
Okay.
I don't remember seeing it.
I don't either, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Baldwin, anything this evening? Concerns?
No, but I'd like to say welcome to Mr. Kennedy. And thank you very much, Mr. Morgan, for the time you've served. And also I'd like to say for, if, if we do have a workshop. In reference to the water, I'd like to see both of those gentlemen be there. With the CDM Smith, I'd like to see both of them as well as Adam. With our water plant be there as well. And also when the task force gives their, their report to us, I'd like to also see all the, those three gentlemen there as well, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did miss, I do appreciate Adam attending tonight. I know he's here and on the Water Quality Task Force, so.
Okay. Yes, indeed. Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes. I, I apologize that I do not remember where we stood when. Raised the question of the noise ordinance and enforcement of noise ordinance before. Um, but I received a complaint about. The. City tap operating after 11:00 PM with. Amplified music. Can someone refresh me about our, our town noise ordinance?
Commissioner Barnes, we, I know it. Trying to pull it up. I think at 11 o'clock that it does change back. But if, if we do have a. If there is a complaint that comes in, we do have a meter.
Okay.
To where, you know, that we can, we can test the noise. Um, so if we do, like I said, if we do have a complaint come in. So at. On nighttime, this is Monday, I guess Sunday through Wednesday. From 11, 11 o'clock to 8:00 AM. It's not to exceed 50 decibels. And then on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Up until 11 o'clock on Thursday and midnight on Friday and Saturday, it's up to 70 decibels. So that, like I said, we do have that in effect and if we do receive a complaint, then. Um, the officers can respond to there that we received the complaint from to see what the decibel. Level is, um, to see if it does meet the, the noise ordinance or exceeds the noise.
All right, so I'll, I'll direct this person to call the non-emergency number.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, if there's. Nothing else, Chris, welcome aboard. You got your, the first one, we are all very anxious to, to be working with you and Bob, thank you again so much. I'm going to miss dropping in and. Chatting with you, but. We're very pleased with what you did for the town and we owe you a big debt and we thank you so much.
It's my pleasure.
Okay.
And, and I would say too, Mayor, I want to thank Bob for his. Time he spent with me over the last few weeks, helping me onboard and. Getting me somewhat caught up with these topics. Certainly there's, there's a, a litany of things to go over and. You know, with that said, if I, if I mess anything up, I'm blaming Bob, so.
That's what we've been doing for the last little bit, too.
That's right, that's right, but, but he's really been a big help and I appreciate his willingness. Just to be supportive of me and he's been a real true asset to the town and. It, it means a lot to, for him to be so cooperative with the new guy, so to speak.
Thank you all. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Cassie, thank you for, again, for your technical expertise and putting all this together. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.